See if you guys need anything before we get rolling. Okay, great. I will officially call us to order here this Tuesday. It's a general meeting, just a regular council meeting with a good working agenda. I'm going to ask if you'd rise. Brad Newman's going to offer our invocation today and then stay standing if you would for the pledges.
Let's pray. Father, I thank you today, first of all, for the gospel, for the good news, God, that though we have sinned against you and our sin rightly deserves death, that, God, you set your love on sinners. Thank you that you sent Jesus to take our sin, to die for our sin, to raise to life. Jesus, you were resurrected so that by believing in you, we may have life, the sure hope of eternal life. We're just so thankful for the good news today. God, we thank you for our city. We thank you for this place that we call home. God, we're thankful for Amarillo. I pray today in our city where there may be brokenness, God, that you would restore. Where there's conflict, would you bring peace? God, where there's emptiness, where there's exhaustion, where there's lack, that you would fill, that you would provide, God, that you would satisfy. We need you. God, I pray for these council members today. We're thankful for this council and for the way that they serve our city. God, I pray you give them wisdom. I pray for discernment as they lead. God, I pray for compassion. I pray that you would grant them compassionate hearts, even, even, God, all the items on the agenda today in some way impact a person. And I just pray that compassion would be at the forefront of the decisions that they make today. Thank you, God, for them again. Bring them unity. God, we acknowledge today that you are sovereign, that you know all and that you control all, and we surrender to that, we submit to that. And we thank you for it too, God, because we can rest in it, because you have a good purpose and a good plan. We're so thankful for who you are and what you've done for us. We thank you again for Jesus. It's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. You guys join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. All right, we're going to take off rolling. I don't show any announcements, but I'll check and see. Staff, do you have any announcements that you need to make? Okay, we're moving on to public comment. I believe Ms. City Secretary will read us into that and she'll run the clock for us here today. Appreciate everyone who would show up here to speak to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address council. We ask that you stay within those three minutes allotted, both during public comment and during any public hearings we hold today. If you are here to speak on an item with a public hearing, we would ask that you make comments on that item either during the public comment period or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help keep accurate minutes. It's your decision at which point you would like to give comments on any public hearing items. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live within the Amarillo city limits. If you're addressing council on an, excuse me, on an agenda item, please state your position so it can be reflected properly in the minutes. If you're speaking to an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how our elected officials may respond. Council may respond with a statement of fact, they may ask the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the city manager who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. Again, thank you for being here today. Our first public speaker will be Alan Feingold, and after Mr. Feingold, our next public speaker
Good afternoon. I have spoken to you before. I am, I am a resident of the city of Amarillo. I've spoken to you before about the setting of water rates in the city of Amarillo. I just want to review a few terms. When I use the term price per unit or cost per unit, that means price or cost per thousand gallons of potable water. Water use means withdrawal of potable water from a pressurized system built and maintained by the city of Amarillo. A residential customer means the head of the household of a residence, that is, the person who actually pays the utility bill for that residence. If I use an integer like 1, 2, 3, 4, N, when I describe a water meter line, it refers to the diameter of the passageway for water through the meter from the city's system which is pressurized to the customer's water line. The meter fee or access fee for a residence with a 5/8 inch meter line is $18.24 per month. For a 1-inch meter line, it's $24.48 per month. As an approximation, you could use $18.50 for the 5/8 inch meter line and $24.50 for the 1-inch meter line. Those are the fees which must be paid whether the residence uses water or not. In other words, you could use no water for a month or two or three, you still have to pay those fees each month if you want to remain connected to the city's water system. So I call this meter fee essentially a meter rental fee or access to system fee, which most frugal water users have to pay as well as every other water user. The meter fee for a commercial user with a 2-inch diameter, that is, a meter line, a meter with a 2-inch diameter, diameter line, is approximately $4 per 1,000 gallons or $4 per unit. The fee that's paid by a frugal water user with a 1-inch meter line is $24.50. The ratio for the most frugal water user to the commercial water user is 6 to 1. That is the case even if the commercial water user uses a million gallons or more of water. I think that this system is unjust, and I think that the city should have a meeting of at least two hours to determine how those water rates were set. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Pittman.
Good afternoon. I'm here to urge the council to make smart, fiscally responsible investments, especially as we are in budget discussion right now, and to do so by building more bikeways and planting more trees. Now, I know everyone's thinking, we can't afford to build or maintain the streets that we've already got. We certainly can't invest anymore in bikeways. But this is precisely why we need to rethink our infrastructure strategy. Cities across Texas and the nation are learning the hard way of what happens when we put cars first. We get more traffic, more pollution, more flooding, and worst of all, unsustainable debt. Here in Amarillo, like in so many cities, we are stuck in a vicious cycle of building wide roads, which brings more cars, which means we need more parking, which brings more cars, which then puts even more demand on our already strained streets. Not to mention that parking lots are the least effective use of our very precious property, space that could be used for additional businesses and homes that could generate additional tax revenue. Meanwhile, the costs of maintaining roads keeps growing, and we struggle to keep up. We cannot tax our way out of this problem, but there is a solution. Bike facilities cost a fraction of what car lanes cost. As an example, look at our very own Rock Island rail trail. It's 25 years old and barely requires maintenance. Meanwhile, our road lanes require constant maintenance. According to the Texas Department of Transportation, up to 2/3 of people would be willing to walk or bike if they had safe, protected bike lanes. I and so many others would gladly give up the car for a healthy, safe, affordable option. Simply for comparison, today's proposal for $6.5 million in street maintenance could build over 100 miles of best-in-class bike facilities that would require minimal maintenance. Watch this week as school starts and rush hour becomes even more unbearable as students have few options but to be driven to school. Imagine if those students could walk or bike to school instead. Not only would there be less traffic, less wear and tear on our streets, but our students would be healthier, more independent, and we would all save money individually and as a city. We can make space for cars, I'm sorry, we can make space for bikes and trees. Trees can soak up hundreds of gallons of stormwater, minimizing flooding risk, reducing the strain on our overburdened drainage system, and tree canopy shading can also extend the life of our streets. By building bikeways and planting trees, we can invest in a healthier city physically, mentally, and financially. A city that's better connected, more beautiful, and built to last. Again, I urge this council and our staff at large to be wise with our budget. Let's do what's right for our city, both today and for generations to come, by riding bikes and planting trees. Thank you.
We had one other individual that sent in a registration with written comments, and those are in council's folders. And that concludes everybody that signed up. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. City Secretary. As always, I see one hand up already. Let's start with Mr. Jimmy Joe. If you come forward, Mr. Skank, and then we'll move down the line.
Before you start my clock, is there a chance I can have a point of order, just in reconciling in my own mind this AEDC vote that went down at the nomination of Mr. Bruckner?
Sure, yeah, go ahead and tell us the point of order in the previous meeting.
Okay, the point of order there, we'd have that you had two abstentions, abstaining. You had three people vote, and you had 2 to 1. 2 to 1 wins. Will Miller should be the AEDC nominee.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's as simple as that.
Well, I'll speak to that. I appreciate the comment on it. I took a couple of comments on that, you know, and how we accepted, or I accepted, that vote. In looking back, I saw that Councilman Prescott originally had voted no, and then was asking if he could change his vote to abstain based on a conversation that I'd had kind of on the side with him. So, Ms. City Secretary, do you recall how you recorded that vote? Was it 2, 1, 2, or was it 2 to 3, 2, 1 with 2 abstaining?
Yes, Mayor, we had that recorded with 3 abstentions and 2 voting for.
Yeah, so I'll just ask Mr. Attorney, is there anything that, I appreciate the point of order, but I know I've spoken with Mr. Miller, and so in moving backwards, I know the nomination was accepted.
Yeah, you have to have a positive vote, an affirmative vote. That requires 3, so you didn't have that there.
In seeing it with 2 abstaining, if we had had, let's say you had a quorum of 3, you had a 2, yes, and a 1, no, would the, would the motion have failed?
No, it would have passed then, but you had abstains, people abstaining without a conflict of interest. That's a no vote, so.
But they're absent. Abstention means they're absent from the vote.
Yeah, the concern, I think, was just in the, the reason for the, the abstain was not a conflict of interest, and so did they count as present that day?
They were recorded as present.
So, Mr. Skank, as they were recorded as present, I took 2 to meet, to not meet the requirement of 3 as a, as a, the quorum was met, but even though they abstained. So I don't know if I was incorrect on it or not. I do know that in placing that position, I did reach out to Will Miller, and I understand his position. Anybody who's going to serve on that board, I would love to see, you know, large support or unanimity. And I felt like if we had have given it back to Mr. Prescott of, you know, that will put Mr. Miller in, or, you know, we could wait on the other one, he more than likely would have changed back to the no vote that he previously gave.
This, this vote aside, I hate to see that kind of precedent set in a voting situation among you five, because that's not right, 2 to 1, but, okay.
Well, we appreciate the point of order, so we'll roll the clock for you.
All good government begins at the local level, so does all bad government. This last week, I wasn't necessarily in the room, but I watched the budget meeting, and I was witnessing the most frustrating budget, and I've been through many budgets with, online, on, well, in the room. We have a $70 million increase fixing to happen, or suggested, proposed, 4.33 added. So, just to remind you, back in 2021, we had a PDP committee that was Partners in Development of Progress, an organization, a committee that we put together, Ginger put it together, Lloyd Brown was running it, of all people. 10, 10 months of meetings that we attended, $300,000 consulting fee to the group that was running it. It was all to take us down a primrose path to a street fee. So the street fee was not just brought up by somebody in here, unless you went back to that thing there and you were, you knew about it, Cole. You know, we, we talked about it. And then we had some sort of poll that went on, that when you start off with 33 people in a committee, and it breaks down to where only about 10 or 12 people are showing up at the end, and then they go for a docu-sign on whether you approve it or not, and people that hadn't shown up for maybe one or two meetings, three meetings, they sign off on the fact that, yeah, we want to have a street fee. They weren't even in there listening to particulars. Me and Floyd shared a table often in that. Okay, so I'm thinking our taxes have always been coming from our, I mean, our street fees have always been coming from our taxes. We've been taking care of those through either a bond and/or, okay? The rolling bond thing that you proposed way back, I thought was a miraculous idea of years of looking at this, to where you take that money by half cent or whatever, and when you increase this budget this year, I'm sort of getting distracted, you had a penny in there that you could get the $15 million, and you could roll it into the next year, and we would keep this from being a, the street fee would be like in all the other fees if we put it on the utility bill, which is nothing but a tax that we have no control of as citizens. You got to leave the, leave taxpayers and fee payers out of the equation by doing that. The enterprise fund is actually taxation without representation. That's bad government. One more thing. We all said, leave the drainage fee alone, but, yeah, get that a break. But we moved the drainage fee money.
Mr. Skank, we appreciate your comments this morning. We'll have another public comment on 8:30 Friday morning as well. Do I have anyone else here today? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come forward.
I'm Hope McCoy, resident of Amarillo. I live out in Pleasant Valley, and I want to add on to what he just spoke about on the street fee. Our property taxes and also sales tax all already help pay for street. And then there's federal and state grants that we apply for that help pay for the streets through text dot and state grants and other funding. And then there's that bond issuance that passed back in 2017 that was 275 million, and from what I understand, all of that money has not yet been spent. So if there's still money in the bank, why are we already asking for more? In 2023, '24, 22 million was also asked for, for a street bond for slurring and sealing There's revenue out there already for the streets, and are we calling it a street fee instead of a street tax so that the voters don't get to vote on it? Because if it's a fee, we don't have a say-so, but if it was a tax, we would get to vote on that. I mean, there's transportation improvement funds out there, we get gasoline taxes, like I said, state tax, Texas dot funds, even builders, developers help improve the roads and streets. So adding a street fee to our water bill, that's, in my opinion, illegal. Does it fall in with the city charter? Does it, is it a state legal law according to the Texas municipality laws? There should be a public vote on this fee, if that's really what it is. There should be either a proposition or a referendum meeting, which I think, Mayor, you just said we're going to have on Monday, on Friday. And then the fee transparency. In the agenda, there's talking about moving funds from sewer drainage for some other capital improvement. Who's going to watch over these fees to make sure that they're not moved to be used for something else? Like the mayor said, you cannot keep continuing to nickel and diming its residents, especially those that live on a fixed income. Whether you raise the bill $8, $15 for a single parent, for an older person, that's a little bit of gas, that's a gallon of milk or loaf of bread for their children. The water and sewer fees were already raised back in October 2024. In prior years to that, at some point, we have to set a precedent and stop raising these fees and then turn around and use them for something else that they were not intended for. So please do not approve this street fee on the water bill. Find another way. There are other ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Mr. Fisher, if you'll come forward, please.
Before my time starts, may I ask for a statement of fact?
Go right ahead.
Is there a single intersection that flooded pre-drainage fee that does not flood today or last night?
Yeah, so I appreciate the question, and we wouldn't be able to answer that for you here today. But I will ask staff to look into that question.
My name's Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. Let me see if I understand this correctly. We just sat through hours of budget discussions where you, you as the council concluded that we need to cover $15 million shortfall. We have to take the streets assessment fee, the fee, quote, one of the council members admitted was really a tax, not sure who it was, I think I remember, but I won't put it on you. And we also have to move drainage and water revenues into the general fund. Translation, we're digging in the couch cushions, robbing the rainy day jar, and pawning off silverware just to pay the bills. And then, the very next first meeting today, we're talking about spending $85,000 on an aquatic market viability study, yet we've already done this, the ARC, about 10, 15 years ago, the citizens voted it down. If we're going to do this the very next meeting, translation, I'm sorry, I went to the wrong place. That's right. We can't afford a metaphorical mortgage, but we're pricing out the family vacation to Disney World. This is like a family realizing they can't make their house payment, and instead of cutting, spending, dad walks in and says, let's put in a pool. Or better yet, it's like the Titanic crew discovering a hole in the hole and immediately holding a meeting discussing upgrading the deck chairs. I mean, this guy, Donny Hooper over here, just a few weeks ago, we're buying BMW motorcycles, man. We don't need BMW motorcycles. We didn't need to upgrade the bathrooms at the civic center for the million bucks. Then they're over here trying to put in a million over here at this, the pavilion. Man, we've got to reel in expenses, man. That's what happens at your house. When you don't have the money, we're not going on vacation, we're not going to buy that new car. Our kid may not be going to the college that you had planned. We've got to buckle, we've got to tighten our belts and cut these costs. And, and they may say, these guys are going to come at you and say, oh, it's in the budget. Well, you have six months, five months to reel in some expenses, and I guarantee you can find 15 million, I can find them today. And you have five months to do that. You have 25% excess to cover rainy day. So you could, you could start cutting costs and make up for that 15 million and hope you get it by the end of the year, because it's not a law that we have to have 25% slash fund. So we could tap that, cut costs, quit buying BMWs and all the other things that we're doing. We're spending another $90,000 to put in lighting at the civic center. They're going to consider that today. I mean, this guy just continues, take that credit card from this man. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Ford, I see your hand in the back. If you come forward, sir.
While we're being judicious with points of order today, I would like to make a point of order on what's been displayed, I'm not pointing at you, Mr. Prescott, behind you, displayed at the, on the screen, the last paragraph there is in direct conflict with 551 007, paragraph E. So it would be good to update, that is where the charter and the state law cannot exist in the same space. So there is, you're not allowed to, that's in direct conflict. Mike Ford, Amarillo, Texas, mayor, members of the council. The last meeting, the city manager inquired about whether or not he was being assessed on a, on an employee assessment, and I'm happy to provide one today. First, during the illegal canvass that we, that I opined about the last meeting I attended, the city manager declared that no one follows Chapter 67's procedure for local canvass. I'm now pleased to report that Randall County will be delivering to you sealed returns of the, of the, in sealed envelopes, and the city manager will be obligated to open them, or the city, or the mayor, in a public meeting and follow the rest of the law, properly qualifying prevailing candidates. Second, the city manager claimed the law bound him to focus exclusively on producing a budget and prohibited him from entertaining individual council member requests. Yet during the same budget period, he honored a single council member's request to spend several weeks developing a, a separate maintenance street fee while Mr. Hopper was trying to produce his own budget inputs for here, diverting the assistant city manager from budget preparation and contradicting his own excuse. Third, Mayor Stanley described this budget process as one of the most confusing in the city history with the $15 million shortfall. No one has explained, and key fund balance data is still missing. That should have been the first thing discussed at the first five minutes of the meeting. If this is the city manager's definition of fiscal stewardship, it explains the chaos in the budget and the disregard for the law involving the canvassing process. Fourth, he failed to investigate the root causes of the $265 million tax notes case, a conspiracy to defraud taxpayers that Councilman Prescott openly and publicly supported, nor identify those responsible, even though the district and appeals court cases have been enshrined in the Attorney General's open meetings handbooks as examples of how not to post public notices. Meanwhile, a scurrilous footnote in the appeals court decision naming Mr. Freeman remains unanswered. Fifth, he failed to refer to law enforcement, a double unapproved transfer without AEDC or city approval of $750,000 of taxpayer funds into a private bank account in violation of both state law and the Texas Constitution. Sixth, he stood by well, HUD embezzlement whistleblower, while the HUD embezzlement whistleblower was harassed out of city employment, all the while posting an illegal meeting notice to create a new facility for the very department where the embezzlement occurred, a facility providing 10 years of free rent to a private group, also in violation of the Texas Constitution. And I'll add one more thing, the, the, the public poll of the finger, the wet finger in the air of who do you want for your police chief? We have a man back here who's highly qualified. Please see that he is the next police chief. Mr. Mayor, this is leadership standard we are tolerating, and accountability is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We appreciate your words. Do I have anyone else here who'd like to offer public comment today? Okay, well?
Mayor, as a matter of fact, Mr. City Manager, what was your first day of employment here?
July 27th of 2024.
Okay. As a matter of fact, some of the things that were, I'm Okay. As a matter of fact, some of the things that were, I'm guessing, accusations against our city manager occurred well before he was here. So just as a matter of fact, I'd like to just put on the record his start date.
Anybody else like to give a remark or offer public comment here before we move on with the agenda? As always, I greatly appreciate everyone who is attending and participating. It's a very important process. At this time, we'll close item number six, public comment. We'll move into item number seven, our consent agenda. Counsel, do I have anything you'd like pulled off before we entertain a motion? I see no one, so I would entertain a motion on our consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for a large portion of our working budget. All right, moving on to our discussion items. Item eight A, review agenda items for regular meeting. Do I have any reviews from counsel? Okay. Item eight B, procurement procedures. Michael Lindley's got this one. He's going to come up here and walk us through cooperative agreements and a few other things that they do for us over there.
Hey, guys. What you got? I'm Michael Lindley, purchasing manager here at the city. Wanted to come to you today and give you a little, little background on, on procurement that we do here at the city. What I gave out there, it's, it's kind of a lengthy read, but it's a really good demonstration that shows a side by side of cooperative versus traditional procurements. I didn't want to put all that in the slide deck, so wanted you to have that to read at a later time if you want. So our mission statement, the purchasing department is committed to procuring all necessary materials, services, supplies and equipment for the city. We operate in strict adherence to the city charter and Texas law, ensuring transparent and legally compliant transactions. Our core responsibility is identifying and implement the most effective procurement methods, always prioritizing the best interests of the city and its taxpayers by securing optimal value and efficiency in all acquisitions. So what this slide's showing, what we're going to cover today is things that come to council for, for approval, fifty thousand dollars and up. So currently, anything fifty and up must be competitively bid or use an approved cooperative agreement. Effective September first, Senate Bill eleven seventy three becomes law and that threshold increases to a hundred thousand dollars. So purchases under a hundred thousand will be procured with three quotes, be competitively bid, or they can use a cooperative agreement, whatever, whichever fits the need the best. And we anticipate bringing a future recommendation to council to hopefully update our policies to align with the new state law. So here's, here's where things start, a requisition. Department needs something. They enter a requisition through workday. That undergoes approval, the approval process to include the review by the city manager's office or ACMs. And then the most effective procurement method is determined. Here's our tools here. We've got cooperatives and then traditional procurement. So traditional is your best value bids, requests for proposals, requests for qualifications and invitations to bid. And we'll go through each of these briefly as we go through it. So what I did was, there's a few slides here that, that kind of touch on some of the things that you have in front of you. Traditional versus cooperative. In a traditional procurement, the city manages the full process, specs, bids, evaluations and awards. It provides full control but requires significant time and internal resources. With a cooperative, it uses contracts that are already competitively bid by authorized co-ops. Organizations approved by the state to conduct bidding on behalf of local governments. It meets legal requirements while reducing administrative burden. Time overview, for a traditional, it can range up to three to twenty four months to put out a project and, and get it through across the finish line. It involves advertising, evaluations, negotiations and multiple layers of approval. With a cooperative, most, most procurements can be completed within, within days to a few weeks. It eliminates duplicative steps already fulfilled by the co-op. Let's see. Traditional requires dedicated staff to manage specifications, outreach, vendor vetting and contract management. It may be difficult for departments with limited capacity. This is the, the end user departments that, that are needing something put out for bid. With a co-op, the resources and due diligence are shared among participating agencies. It reduces internal workload without sacrificing oversight. Traditional unit pricing is based on the project size and negotiation outcomes. It can be based on, pricing is based on single agency bids. We put out a bid, they're going to give us a price for that, for that, just that. Small volume purchases could result in ender, higher per unit cost. With a co-op, you get aggregated purchasing power, which leads to competitive volume-based pricing. Again, it reduces the admin cost and they're, they're still reviewed to ensure, sure they meet the city standards for best value. So how do co-ops work? I, I think that was a question, you know, when, when we first went down this road. Vendors and contractors register with, with the co-ops that are out there and they receive bid opportunities. Very similar to our bonfire system. When we put out a bid, they get notified when there's an opportunity. So that the co-ops all offer that as well. They conduct competitive bidding process that complies with state law. And contractors who perform consistently and reliably often become preferred partners due to proven track record. So with a co-op, an average timeline for a procurement is around a month. And there's the local government code as well as the Texas government code that allows us to, to utilize these. Here's a list of our commonly used cooperatives. I'm sure everybody's heard of some of these. Byboard's a big one for us. Sourcewell, DIR is huge in the IT procurement world. So that's a state of Texas cooperative that we utilize. Now we'll, we'll get into a little bit of the, the bidding process. What we do a lot of is best value bids and that, that means we're awarding contracts based on overall benefit, not just the lowest price. We're looking for the best value for the city of Amarillo. Below that, you'll see some of the evaluation criteria that can be used depending on what the project is. So now a best value bid. When we do one of those, first thing we, we have to advertise it in the newspaper. The average cost for each advertising we do is around three hundred dollars. So we advertise it in the newspaper as well as our electronic bid system, Bonfire. There's a risk for potential or limited responses. There's been times we, we got no responses on bids that we've put out. And there's significant staff involvement. So the process overview, the department, requesting department drafts the scope and the criteria that they want that evaluated on. It's publicly advertised, it's evaluated and scored, it comes before council. And then we, we obtain the contract, the, the contracts, the bonds, everything that needs to go along with it. Couple of examples that we did recent were Fire Station fourteen as well as the twenty four, twenty five street maintenance. Request for proposals. It's just like a, a best value bid that we just discussed, except there's an opportunity for best and final offers within that. So I won't read that to you, but again, you see a couple of examples of, of recent RFPs that we did. And then we've got requests for qualifications, follows same thing, advertising, bonfire. Couple of examples are firefighter, medical and fitness eval and the financial audit services that, that was presented while back to you guys. Then we've got invitation to bid. So this is a low cost, we, we want your best price for, for golf balls. Supplies. It's things that are very well defined. There's a scope, there's, emulsions is, is a good example. The, there's specifications and we can put out a bid and say, give me your best cost on this. So that's, that's something we do quite often as well. Here's a timeline that we put together that kind of shows staff effort compared to the, the, the weeks involved in, in doing these procurements. You can see cooperative, it's, it's usually our quickest, most efficient way to go about things. And then this is just another look at, at the timelines. So any questions I can answer?
Questions, guys?
Michael, when that, I think when this became a big deal, it was right when we awarded one, and I think when you came on, you really began to utilize these co-ops because they're more efficient and which you clearly showed the number of weeks it takes and the resources and the advertising, all that kind of thing. Some push, or some questions I got were, I know you said that the co-ops, they, they notify contractors of the ability to get on their list, correct?
They do if the contractors go on and, and sign on with that co-op.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the, it's up to the contractors to realize that these lists are out there. And if they want to be a part of that, they've got to put in a request to say, hey, let me know when the next signup is.
Yes, that's, that's correct. And, and of course, our, our goal would be for every local contractor to be on one, one cooperative or another to, to help that efficiency.
And, and there's many co-ops as you just listed there, right? I mean, so if we have a, a project, you can actually pull from two or three different co-ops and see, I mean, what different contractors are bidding for that job, yes, or the price for that job?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, another, another question we got was that they felt like that maybe the co-op was overpriced. You know, it's like, well, somebody gets on there where we have a competitive bid, you know, on the other side. You know, we're looking at whatever factors, you know, however we weight that on Best Buy or whatever. How do you, how do you come against that and say, well, hey, we're not, we're not paying too much? You know, or are we paying too much when we go to a co-op?
I, I, I think in that instance, a lot of times we rely on subject matter experts that, that run the departments that, that can look at those proposals and say, this, this seems out of line. And, and the co-ops are just a tool. We can, we can get a quote from them and if it fills out of line, absolutely, we can put it out to bid.
Sure. What do we typically find? I, I know, Mr. Danforth, we had a, a project, I believe. And then he went through, he had a co-op project and went through a, an independent contractor and said, hey, bid this thing out. Just a big job. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
I'm thinking of a couple of projects you could be.
Okay, that he did that with. So we chose, we chose to go the co-op way of, of choosing the contractor for the project. But then we had another contractor come in and just not seeing that with the scope, go ahead and bid it. And if I remember correctly, the independent contractor was actually more than what the co-op contractor was for the same scope, same job. Is that correct?
If we're talking about the same project, I believe that was, that, that involved and, and, and required, needed a, a general contractor because it was more than just, just laying down some pavement.
Sure. But I guess my point is, you know, and it, it concerned us or concerned me up here too, when those questions were asked is, you know, is the co-op competitive? You know, are we wasting money? Are we being a good steward of our taxpayer dollars? Which, you know, we're in budget season. We're definitely trying to be tight. You know, that's always important to us to make sure that we are spending the money appropriately. And, and I had my concerns to say, well, gosh, I mean, are we just, are we being lazy? You know, is, is the staff being lazy and just going to co-op because it's easier? And I think what we came to is that is no, we're being more efficient and we're not overspending. Is that, that's the findings. Is that fair to say?
That's how I feel and I, I sleep well at night. I pay taxes in the city as well. So I, I, I think, I think we're getting a good value, the best value for the city. I go back to those, those contractors are going to have better priced agreements with a cooperative than they are for a single line project for the city. And again, we're, we're not always going straight to a co-op. It's just a tool. When I got here, I, I, I came from healthcare background, things moved fast. And, and when I got here, they said things take three to six months and, and so started looking for efficiencies. The city was already using cooperatives to some extent, but once we discovered what their potential is, we were really able to get more efficient, I feel.
Yeah. And I think beyond, and you're being very gracious to say, you know, I feel like that this is a good, I think it goes beyond how you feel. I think that the facts have actually supported that this is a better, sometimes, not always.
Sometimes.
Sometimes a better use of the taxpayer dollars and our funds that we're being so frugal with.
Yes.
I appreciate you saying you feel that way, but I mean, I think the facts actually show that as well.
And, and.
And we can abandon that, right? If we go to the co-op, can we abandon that and go a different route?
Yes, absolutely. Just because you get a cooperative quote, you can, you can scrap it and put a bid out if you want to do it for comparison. It wouldn't be ideal because as you saw, putting bids out is, is a lot of effort on everyone's part, not just, not just our department.
Sure. Okay. And so, and again, just to reiterate, the local contractors that felt like this was unfair because they weren't able to be chosen because they're not on the co-op, well, it's up to them to be on that list. It's not up to us to solicit them to say, hey, go be on this list. It's up to them. It's part of their business. If they want to bid in this or swim in this pool, they've got to get in it. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct. And I, I feel like again, most, a lot of our, our local contractors are on one co-op or another. And we're agnostic. I don't care what co-op they use. It's, it's efficiency for the, for the city of Amarillo.
Yeah. Okay. Michael, thank you for putting this together. I know we had a lot of questions when that came up.
I know it's been a long time coming. I'm, I'm glad to finally get up here and get to talk to you guys about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to go back, tell me a little bit about your background in purchasing. What, what did you do before you came to the city? And how did you get to the city? A little bit about your.
I don't know if that'll help or hurt me, but my background, thirty plus years in healthcare supply chain at, at hospitals and corporate offices. So I feel like when I got here, I brought a different perspective. I brought an outsider's perspective of, of how to do things more efficiently, effectively. And, and it's, it's been a great learning experience for me. I never get bored. I learn something new every day in this world. But that, that's my background.
And in the private sector, did you ever face any pressure to keep costs down?
Oh, that, that was a daily occurrence, yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
And in, in, in the hospital world, things are bought through a group purchasing organization. All the items are, are pre-negotiated. You know how much they cost based off those contracts. You just go buy. So it's, it's different in a little ways to this, but once I discovered a cooperative in this world, it felt somewhat familiar. And it's still, it enabled us to get things moving faster and, and appropriately, more, more important.
And you also said in the cooperatives, they, it's not just they sign up in the business. I mean, they have to go through a bidding. There's a bidding process involved in the cooperative, similar to the bidding that we have on.
Yes, that's a, that's a great question. They, they put out RFPs just like we would. They vet, they score, they evaluate, they award, same as we would. The difference is they're geared, they're, they're set up differently. They have a, an entire large staff of people to do nothing but that. They're not trying to run a purchasing department, day-to-day operations. Their focus may only on putting out good quality bids and awarding good quality contractors. That I've not run across any yet that, that have been awarded that, that didn't need to be.
And then tell me a little bit about, you mentioned, I think, one of the. And then, tell me a little bit about, you mentioned, I think, one of the advantages of the cooperatives that helps us is the purchasing power that they have. Tell me the difference or the advantage of the purchasing power of a cooperative versus what the purchasing power of just us as an individual city would be.
I think it's as simple as they're going to give better pricing to, to the cooperative that may cover the entire country than they are to a single entity being the city of Amarillo.
And then let's just say, we look at things and we say, you know what, we don't want to use cooperatives anymore, we're just going to bid everything out. Tell me the pros and cons of that? Does that, does that ultimately, would that save taxpayer money? Could it have the potential to cost more to, to, tell me about if we just went that route?
Absolutely, it would cost more. And we're not really staffed to, to do that. Bidding is, while it's, there's, there's still a need for it, it's not really the way I feel business is conducted in the year 2025. Yeah, these products that we're buying, they've all been bid, it's just been done for us.
Thank you.
Excellent questions.
Yeah, thank you all.
Mr. Lindley, thank you for the presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Do you see a lot more qualified vendors using the buy board as opposed to going to the traditional bidding methods because it's so much faster? Do we get a better product going through the co-op type things?
That's a tough one. Like I said, most of our big contractors in town are on one, one co-op or another. So we have that option to go choose. But, yeah, again, these co-ops, they, they don't mess around when they come to award a contractor. Or we could be talking about goods and, you know, goods as well, just general buying widgets. They really run them through the wringer. So I feel very confident in, in the fact that these are all vetted very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I got a few questions for you, but I had actually pushed it out. I think I was driving, I wanted the procurement process, I wanted some additional information, and then I learned a little bit more, got a little bit more comfortable, and then we just had a few other things that we needed to get to. So appreciate you waiting. But I want to make sure that you're utilizing the cooperative the best way we can on the benefits for the city. So I just need a little more information because I would imagine you are, I just don't know better. So, you know, I think some of the concerns that were, were vented to me were like this fairness issue of, we didn't know that that project existed, it was only on that one. And so it just comes down to with the public posting and the way that we normally do it. And so are we doing everything on a cooperative the same way we would if we were putting up just a low bidder award on Project A?
No, because we, we don't post, the bids already been done. We just select the best qualified for that particular project. It does not go through the paper, the bonfire process.
So could, could we improve on that? Because the more vendors that you have, and keep in mind, I'm going to separate here, differentiate a construction type project, something that's got criteria, engineering design, many, many things, larger dollar typically versus like something off the shelf that you're going to buy. And maybe you buy a thousand of them, you know? So if you need to buy coat hangers, like the cooperative is great, get the low bid, you know, put your criteria on it. I don't think that's a posting issue. But in the fairness of trying to keep the, the local monies local and give all of our qualified bidders the opportunity for construction type items, can we improve upon that in the way in which we kind of utilize these co-ops?
I would have to put some thought into that. I don't quite know what that would look like just out of the gate.
Okay. And the, the other thing would be not just using one co-op, and I don't really know how they work. So I don't know if we pay them or if the contractor pays them. Who pays the cooperative?
That's the contractor.
So they're paying for that service? Do they have to pay whether they get a job or not, or they pay based on the award of the job?
You know, I can't answer that question, but I do have a resource here if you guys want to get in, get some clarification on that.
I would be curious, because if, if there was a way for us to put it on the website to, to go ahead and notice, like, these are our cooperatives, or do we already do that? Or do we have a common place where, let's say I'm a local contractor and I've just now gotten to that level where I'm now highly critteried and qualified, I could bid your project. Because I do get people from time to time say, hey, I want to bid City Work, how do I do that? So describe that to me and how could we help get more qualified bids?
Ultimately, that's going to be up to, to the locals to research the cooperatives and make sure they sign on with all of them.
Okay. And in your opinion, good to have as many people? There's no limit to Sourcewell versus buy board?
There's not.
You can have as many vendors that are selling widgets as well as GCs and different types of contractors?
Yes, sir.
So, do you know, can you drive the criteria? Like I would, ultimately what I would want is to be able to utilize a cooperative because that's kind of the way that you guys have moved, you see the efficiencies, but then also be able to get back to that high criteria, low bidder award? So can you control that value best bid where you say, I want 70% of my value to be on the, the, the dollar total? And, and then I'm just looking for these other things. You can't have a lawsuit with the city, you can't have these certain things versus, well, you know, 35% of ours is on the, the cost analysis and the rest of it is on, you know, more subjective matters. And so if we're releasing that control to the cooperative, how can you dictate to them what we want to see?
I don't believe that's a thing. They're, they're pretty standard in what, what they evaluate on for their RFPs when they put them out.
So do you know, do they, do they draft to the low bid? Have you seen a bid that's higher than another one that got awarded from the cooperative?
No, that, that's not something we typically see. That's all done for us and it's all, it's not hidden, but it's, you know, when you look at a Sourcewell RFP that they put out, there's thousands of pages of documents that they put out, all the submissions are there. It's, we just know Sourcewell has a co-op for, for this, this service and we, we can get a quote.
And I do know, Michael, I like the way that if it's national, you've got good averages and you know market pricing. But then when you're talking about a project where, let's say, city manager proposes Project X, we budget 3 million, you go out to the cooperative, they come back, let's say it's 4 million, million over budget, we want to VE that. Do we have that concern with, well, now contractor A has given his price for Project X and he's concerned that if we pull it back, because that was the issue we had last time?
Yeah, that's, that gets into, I think it's a little bit different, the co-op pricing being shown versus if we did an internal bid, that we would, you know, include those prices. I, I just don't know.
I would like to know more on like, how do we value engineer one that comes back high? Because I think we should, we should have a procedure in place that if we do have a budget award of 3 million and then it's over budget, because I've seen a lot of really good negotiation out of Mr. Danforth.
Yes, sir.
And, and we've, we've been the beneficiary with some good local contractors on some projects. My concern was handing this over to a third party and then we're just over budget and then council is in a position where now we're accepting bids that are over budget and we don't have an opportunity to drive that VE design.
I understand. You know, you mentioned Jerry, I wish he was here today to, to help me up here a little bit, but I, I don't feel like anybody's ever going to pull anything over on him with his experience, his knowledge. You give him a budget, he's going to know when that proposal comes back, if it's out of line or not.
Just a few finals, and you're doing fine, I'm asking questions that you, you may not have the answers, but I'm sure we can get those answers. And then I want to tighten those shoelaces as much as possible on behalf of council moving forward so that as we see these cooperatives, we may have less involvement than what we felt like we needed to have. And it will truly be more efficient, but design criteria is still given by the city, right?
Yes.
So we're still hiring architect, they're doing their own designs, those are being driven by us?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with a minimum, maximum? So like, construction project over a million dollars, we don't use the co-op or we, we don't use it on certain types of projects? Like, I know it really helps you to buy, you know, off-the-shelf items, we don't want to take that away from you at all. Plus, I think we have way more pricing fairness.
We appreciate that.
What, what do you, what would you be comfortable in a dollar figure if council wanted to just say, you know, if it's above a certain amount, we do a traditional bid proposal and we, we know it's going to take three months?
I, you, you could really get in a corner on that? I don't know if we want to make it a dollar amount or if we just bring it, have discussion amongst city management to see where they want to go with it before, before we put a bid out for it. That, but that's, that's up to, to you guys and.
Do you, do you ever work without a bid? Like a budget that's, are you working on numbers that we hadn't seen yet?
The, the, the numbers come from whoever's requesting the project to be done.
So staff is always, you know, looking at, this is what we can afford, and then they give it to you. Because I think if we didn't have a, a floor right there where we're like, you know what, over this amount, we're going to do traditional bids. That way, we as council get to say, look, there were five bidders and they took the low bidder, so I'm sorry it's over budget, but it is what it costs. Right now, we're not able to see that. We also can't say that, well, we took the low bid because we've relinquished some of that control. We don't know how many bidders or how many platforms you put it on. I think we like the fact that you might put it to four or five different platforms. That way you ensure that you're getting the most eyes on it. That's all I'm driving for. I'm curious if, if maybe staff, Mr. City Manager could help us in looking at a few things. If, if we could look at, you know, the, the legal ramifications of pulling a project down, knowing that if, if we said, look, the budget is the budget, we have to assign an affordability to it, once it goes out, you know, for the, the platform, the cooperative, if it comes in over the, the given budget that we would have approved, then it would automatically come back for a VE. Or then we go to a low bid and we know we have the delay. Is that something we could look at?
Yes, I mean, currently right now, our current standing policy in this period right now is anything over a million is we're looking at the, the traditional options here, given, given the concerns that were raised this last summer. So, no, I think part of the goal here would be to get council's guidance on, on what you'd like for us to work on and what you'd like for us to set up a minimum or maximum threshold or some kind of policy along that. And we just want to see some guidance on that.
Counsel, y'all have any feedback on, if it's an off-the-shelf item, I would be comfortable with just going with market price, not, not trying to drive that with anything. But if it's a designed item, architect, engineer, construction type project, would you guys want to keep those below a million dollars would go through the co-ops? Or take that off and allow, dollar, dollar amount doesn't matter, it just has to have some rein on it and affordability. Somebody had to have decided we could afford that. Otherwise, what I'm concerned with is, we're putting this out to local bidders, they've bid it, then we're going to volunteer their pricing in the public and then we're going to pull the project back and put it back up. And that contractor may have a grievance against the city that though he participated fairly, like in good faith, he didn't get the project. So I want to avoid that as the concern.
Does that even happen? That doesn't happen, does it?
No, I think, I think we're misunderstanding maybe. I, I don't know. Because we're.
I disagree. We're never going to go for an RFP, open the bids and then go a co-op, right? We just wouldn't do that.
No.
So, so once we've done that.
The opposite.
So you're saying that we go for, we, we pick a co-op? Who, who are we disclosing their pricing to? We don't see it.
The concern was, the bid comes back over budget and so you have to have a budget.
They don't get to bid it. I mean, we, we, we put forth what it's supposed to be and if they don't come in under that, we don't get one.
Yeah, the bids aren't specific, for, for a co-op, when they do a bid, it's not specific to a project we're putting out, it's their book. So when we tell them what we need done, they, they can price it based off that, that pre-negotiated price book.
So they're never coming in over. And I'm okay, let's just go back to the, the products. I think that's not even an issue with us. Get the best deal, that's to me, that, we're not talking about products, we're talking about projects here. So products, absolutely, get the best price. But projects, and I don't see, I, I don't, I don't doubt his team that they're going to get the best deal and, and talking to him saying, hey, we, we may even get several, several co-ops to bid this thing to make sure we're getting the best deal. And we've even doing, with Danforth, we're doing some checks and balances of like, even when we get one, we're going to have an independent contractor go out and bid the same thing and see if we're, and, yep, sure enough. Well, I don't, I don't think that we need to see these, in my opinion, just my opinion, over a dollar amount, under a dollar amount? No, just do your job, do it, and then we're going to figure it out if it's, if it's not being done right.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
We do value engineer even these projects on the buy board or, or these cooperatives. So those negotiations do take place. And the project that you were referencing to earlier was the Service Center North project where we had one, and we pulled that, went back, we actually did go back and get a second bid on that and it was actually higher than the original.
And the co-op, that's the one, co-op came in.
Correct.
Less expensive than the private.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I think then, just, because council member, you kind of agree with Mr. Tip?
I think so, because I, I don't see a problem here that we're, that needs to be solved. I mean, I think we are going through this process, we're working at it, we're trying to get the best price through there. So I guess my question would be, and you may not be, because you've not been in this, but for local groups, I mean, why would a local contractor choose not to be in there versus choosing to be in there? Do you know the answer to that question?
That's a good, that's a really good question. And, and I would encourage, if any local contractors reach out to anyone on the council, send them my way. I can share them the co-op list. But again, it's ultimately up to them to, to register on those cooperatives so they're notified when, when, I think they put bids out every couple of years and they cycle. So I, I can lead them to water, I can't make them drink.
And is there any investment to become part of the cooperative or, or is it?
Don't know.
Or are you just, you pay for when the business gets?
Not for us.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I think probably then, and so the problem, and I'm not saying it's a problem, I think the assurance that we're trying to give is that walking forward into this, we've, we've built some guardrails. And so one guardrail that would be, I'd be in favor of if council is and staff doesn't see any problem with it, you know, instead of doing like your traditional bids, if you use the cooperatives, let's do a minimum of three platforms.
That, that's happened in the past.
That's, that's easy to do, right?
It was a really good exercise.
So I think moving forward, what we could assure is that we didn't just reach out to the one cooperative that maybe only has the one contractor on it, right? Because we don't know how many contractors are on this, if we're not going to have our hands in it, we don't want to be fielding the criticism later. So the, the way to make sure that doesn't happen is we just offer it to multiple co-ops. That would help you get the most effective, efficient pricing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then if you're doing that, I don't know that it necessarily matters whether it's a $500,000 deal or a $5 million deal. And quite frankly, I think the scrutiny is on us whether it's $80,000 taco truck or a $8 million, you know, pool. Like you're still being scrutinized for the dollars. So I would be good with just putting in that, that blanket policy of, you know, multiple cooperatives every time. And when we do get questioned, we could pull that. My last question would just be the contracts. Are the cooperatives drawing the contracts or are we still drawing those?
Are they what?
Are the cooperatives drawing the contracts or are we still drawing those?
They draw the, so when they award the, the RFPs that are put out, that's, that's their contract. And then on our side, we do the, the standard form of agreement when we're obtaining their bonds and then after that, the, the notice to proceed.
So what I'm thinking of is like liquidated damages and some teeth in the deal to make sure we don't get saddled with contractor that's not performing? Is all that in the cooperatives?
Yes, and if it's not, it's going to be built, it's built into our, our backing.
Your agreement?
Yes.
Okay, all right, councilman.
Did you say the, the thing that the mayor's recommending, that you've already tried that or are doing that?
Yes, I can, probably not well give an example, but I know facilities did that with a, a recent project. They got three, three quotes from three different cooperative contractors and, and went with the lowest cost and, and the best value. So it's, it's a thing, it can happen. Facility is really good at facilitating stuff like that. a thing, it can happen. Facility is really good at facilitating stuff like that.
Yeah. And is it cost that much more time, energy, or resources to do more than one, or to, to do three?
Uh, I wouldn't think so. I, I wouldn't want to do it as a common practice, but I would think on construction projects, if you, if, if there's a desire for that, then, then I, I would think the Facilities team could probably help, help put everybody's mind at ease.
And then Mayor, the goal out of that is just to make sure that everybody's aware of it, or just putting a final touch of scrutiny to make sure that we're getting the lowest price.
Yeah, a couple, couple accomplishments there. One, you're gonna, you know you have a field of eyes that you're not controlling. So you don't know when, you're putting a project out that, that only one person is seeing. So you would ensure that you were at least have multiple eyes on it. So you should be getting multiple bids back, hopefully every time. Two, you're going to have a comparative, so it justifies the cost, more so than just kind of a national cost of averages. Because these construction projects aren't, you know, like buying a thousand hangers. And so if we separate that, I think as a, as a off-the-shelf item, not asking for that, but as a construction project, especially when you get over in the millions of dollars, it's a good business practice. And, and I believe, Councilman, you know, it doesn't take any more time or effort on our end, and we're just, you know, utilizing those resources more so.
And then one other question for contractors. So if a local contractor's not in it currently, they become in it, not only do they have the opportunity to get city business, then it opens them up also to business elsewhere if they're interested in it?
Yes, if they, if they service outside of the Panhandle, you know, Lubbock, whatever, it, it opens that world up for them. So, it could definitely grow their business.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, is there any way we can put, I know on our side it looks like we use Bonfire, you know, is there a way, and it would be beneficial to list the co-ops that we do use? That way, if a contractor does wonder which ones to go to, they can just, maybe they can ask Emma, and say, you know, which ones do we use? And there's, just like that list that you just did in your presentation, I know that was the most used, or the most commonly that we use. Something like that? I mean, could we list those up there so that the contractors could find it?
I would think the best place to put that, wouldn't be Bonfire, it'd be on the, the City of Amarillo purchasing page.
No, that's what I mean. I, it looks like the website only shows-
Yes.
-Bonfire. But on the website, if we could have a page that, basically just like you did in your presentation, commonly used, or these are the ones we hold.
That's a great suggestion, and it wouldn't be hard to hyperlink the, the links to each of those co-ops, so they can go ahead and get on there and, and sign up for notifications for upcoming business.
Yeah, and that way, it's, it's off us, it's off you, they don't have to call you and ask, it's, it's just right there.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that'd be a great idea, if we could get that done.
Yeah, Miss, Miss Emma would be able to kick that out as well, Amarillo. So-
Put her to work.
If we could get a takeaway here, just to make sure, because I know we kind of drug the conversation. So, off-the-shelf items, standard procedure as you've been working, we've been educated, thank you. Anything that requires architect or an engineer could be treated as a construction-type item. That type of item would go on multiple platforms, three minimal, and then we've kind of solved the problem. Is that good, Mr. City Manager? Council, anything you want to add to that, or, or redirect?
I, I don't know that you're always going to find three.
Yeah.
You know, if, if, if you have a project, and there, there may not be three local candidates that, that, that are on co-ops that, that can provide that. So, I would ask that maybe it's at least two.
Yeah, or when we can.
You know.
Because if it's not available, it's not available.
Yeah.
We can't say, if you can't pull three, then we're not using a co-op. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I may be, it may be my ignorance here, so make sure I understand. I'm talking about three different cooperatives-
Right.
-on the platforms. If that cooperative doesn't have a, a contractor of that type, then we would look at a different cooperative platform. So what you're saying is, you may have a specialized project that you don't have availability with three different platforms.
With three cooperative contractors, right.
There might not be a contractor on three different cooperatives that would offer the services that we're asking, so therefore there would be-
That would be a very specialized project, though.
Not necessarily.
Yeah. But I'm not sure. Jerry's probably the resident expert in a lot of this.
Okay.
But yeah, we can, we can do whatever. I just, I don't want to limit it us, if we can help it, to, to slow things down.
We can pursue three, but if there's ever a situation when three is not, we can make the council aware of that, that, hey, we, we tended to get three, but there's only two, or whatever it is. We'll make you aware that when we bring it to you for agenda.
I think that'd be great. That way, when it hits the agenda, that would be kind of part of the backup of, we shopped three, we only got one, right?
I'm good with that.
So, Mr. Lindley, very, very good presentation. Appreciate you and your patience getting to it, so.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is our one item on discussion. So we will see, do we have any requests for future agenda items from council?
I've got one, Mayor. I'd like to maybe ask, and then maybe we can, I know we're about to get up in boards and commissions appointments, it'll be a couple of months down the road. But I wouldn't mind entertaining maybe a look at how we handle that process. And, you know, not only how we select them, but how we're communicating to people, you know, keeping them up to date on the status. So, I don't think it's anything that has to be done by the next meeting, but I would like to put something on the agenda for maybe the process of how we handle boards, boards and commissions appointments, how we go through that selection process. I mean, historically, it's kind of been, the first to make a motion is that, that, that person, but I, I don't know if there's another way to do it, or another way to be able to, to go through that process. And there may not be, but also not focusing on the selection process. But what, what, how do we communicate with the people that are there to make sure that we keep them in the loop about what's going on? And we may already be doing that, but maybe an overview of that and discussions on, are we fine with the way we do it, or is there any room for improvements?
Well, Mr. Path can redirect if he wants to, but I think City Secretary would be able to educate us on kind of her typical, and then you guys could weigh in from there. So just put it up for a discussion item, and then we would go walk that forward with plenty of time, hopefully.
And if I can add, Councilmember Simpson, we're planning to come to you in September for an overview of the process. As we get ready to open applications, we could make sure that it includes all of these topics to cover with council.
Okay, council, anything else that you guys would like for a future agenda item? No. Okay, that closes out all of Section 8. We will now move into our non-consent. Council, y'all good to keep cruising? No breaks? Everybody good? We'll keep going. Item 9A, our favorite presenter, Mr. Brady Kendrick, on a public hearing, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Brady Kendrick, Senior Planner. This first item is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8204. This one is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance considering the rezoning of 176.08 acres of unplanted land. This is in Section 32, Block 9, BSNF Survey located in Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of I-27 and Sundown Lane. They are requesting the rezone from agricultural district to light commercial district. And the applicant is Furman Land Surveyors, Inc., for Atterbury Elevators LLC. And this is a property that was recently annexed into the city limits a couple months back, and a portion of it, 71 acres approximately, is proposed to be developed at the Kids, Inc. Sports Park Project. And then the remainder of it will be future retail and commercial sites. Regarding City Plan 2045, this property until recently was outside city limits, so it does not have an assigned place type at this point. So we will assign one in a future place type amendment that's brought forth. And it does conform with City Plan's goals and objectives of strategically locating commercial uses in areas close to highways, and is also located in a targeted growth area as identified by City Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission found that, given its location along I-27 and along several arterial roadways, this property is most suited for commercial-type development. And given the existing land uses that are around this property, it's already developing in a commercial nature, especially with entertainment uses, given the movie theater down there, the sports world facility and the golf course. So, given the anticipated development plans for this area, the PMZ did find that this would be a logical zoning to establish down here, given the growth patterns in the area. And they did recommend approval of this quest, request with a 5-0 vote, and we did not receive any public comments on this item either.
Okay, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions for, for you, council? You have something, Councilman? No? Okay. Can you go back real quick to that, Matt?
Sure.
This is just me kind of putting something out into the ether here, like, because you never know what you get, like, when you just put it out there. But what a fantastic place with the Kids, Inc., and everything that's going there. Like, Top Golf would be a fantastic thing to have right there with all the families that are around. And I'm sure we would welcome that here in the city. So we appreciate the developer for annexing this, and then I'll move along to the public hearing. Do I have anyone here who'd like to speak for or against this item? We will now formally open a public hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and would consider a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 8204.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second from Place 4. Any discussion on this one? All in favor on item 9A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9B, back to you, Mr. Kendrick.
All right. 9B is a, also a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8205. This is the, considered the rezoning of Lot 24, Block 48, East Amarillo Subdivision Unit Number 1, located in Potter County, Texas, in the vicinity of Northeast 10th Avenue and North Grand Street. The applicant is proposing the rezone from Plan Development District 334 to Plan Development 334A, to add medical clinic as an allowed land use within the planned development. And the applicant is Perla Gallegos. And the, like I mentioned, they're proposing to add a medical clinic as an allowed land use. This plan development was originally approved to allow for multifamily uses in addition to a beauty shop. The beauty shop did close within the last handful of years, so they are proposing to move a medical clinic into this site. The original plan development was worded in a manner where it did not give staff the flexibility to allow the clinic without a amendment, so that is the reason we are here today. They are not proposing any exterior changes to the site, so they are going to maintain the exterior of the site as it was originally approved, and they are only doing interior work on the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission found that the medical clinic is a very similar impact in nature to that of a beauty shop, and felt like there would not be any detrimental impacts if this additional use was allowed to occur within this building. So, they believed it was an appropriate request. We did send comments, send notices as required per state law, and have not received any comments as of the meeting today. And they did recommend approval of this item as well with a 6-0 vote. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions? No questions for you there, Mr. Kendrick. Appreciate that. At this time, I'll open a public hearing on item 9B. Do I have anyone who'd like to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 8205.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9C, I believe that's your last one there, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, 9C is also a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8206. This one is a rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Wright Edition Unit 1. This is located in Potter County, Texas as well, and is proposing the rezone from Residential District 1 to General Retail District in the vicinity of Northeast 16th Avenue and North Mir Street. And the applicant is Jose Roderde. And the applicant is proposing this change to develop the site with retail land uses. The south lot currently has a, what Staffalese is a legal, non-conforming retail building there that currently has a flower shop. The north lot there has a single-family home on it currently, and they have a desire to expand retail uses to that lot as well, while also bringing the legal, non-conforming use into legal status with appropriate zoning. So that is the reason for the request today. So going to the city plan place types, the south lot, in the pink there, is a commercial, so this request would conform with that. The north lot there in the yellow is actually one of our residential categories, so technically this request would not conform with that category. However, we believe this is a bit of an oversight by the consultant whenever this place type map was originally set up. Because as you can see there, the property is surrounded on three sides, or two of the sides by general retail, and then that commercial place type is on three of the sides of that north lot there. So, it really wouldn't make sense for that lot to be kept residential as it could potentially have retail and commercial uses on three sides of it. So you could run into a compatibility issue there. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did believe that a variation from the map for that lot was appropriate in this instance. And then given that this is at a fairly highly-traveled intersection, that one of them of which is considered an arterial, this intersection and the properties along it would be more suited for commercial development rather than single-family development, the Planning and Zoning Commission found. This one, we did send notices out on as well. We did receive one comment that was in support from a neighboring property owner who did have a desire to see more retail uses brought to the area. And we also did field an additional phone call that was just a general inquiry, once explained and not expressed opposition to the request. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this one as well with a 6-0 vote.
Really good. Mr. Kendrick, anything for Mr. Kendrick? Questions?
What did you say, the type of business that they're putting in there?
So they don't have a proposed use for the north lot quite, quite yet. The south lot does have an existing flower shop there. So, I believe they potentially want to build an additional retail building perhaps on that north lot, so that they can offer a wider range of uses on this property.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who'd like to speak for or against item 9C? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and would ask for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 8207.
Second. Oh, 6, I believe.
Clarify the motion, please. 8206. So, motion to adopt 8206, and a second from Place 2. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
No problem.
All right. Item 9D is Mr. Anthony Spinell, on a few changes, I believe with some state codes that we're going to go ahead and update here.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Anthony Spinell, I'm your Environmental Health Director for the city. This agenda item is an update to Chapter 85 of the Amarillo Municipal Code, it's Environmental Health Code. This agenda item updates basically two things that had passed in state, state legislative last session. Essentially, it'll update all the changes for Senate Bill 1008, which is essentially a statewide standard for food establishment permitting. That Senate Bill does several things, and I'll kind of hopefully summarize them here. But essentially, it sets a maximum fee caps for food establishments. It dictates how we can charge our, our food establishment fees here locally. You essentially have to treat everyone as if they were in the state's jurisdiction, and you can choose one of two methods, either assessing fees based upon gross sales, or assessing fees based upon risk. We are choosing to follow exactly what the state is doing, assessing fees based upon gross sales, and that's almost exactly what all of my colleagues across the state are doing. Additionally, it sets local permit requirement limitations. You have to honor exemptions that the state of Texas, state of Texas issues. For example, we can no longer issue food establishment permits for childcare centers. We still will inspect them on a different side of the house, our group care side, but it'll be combined into one inspection, and we have to honor nonprofit exemptions now. Nonprofits are allowed to opt-in, but we can't require permitting. It also requires stakeholder notice for really any change that you want to make here locally. If you want to change your fees, any kind of regulatory change, you have to put it out 60 days in advance and allow input from the community. This was signed into law on May 19th and becomes effective September 1 of 2025. Second, this, this will include changes related to House Bill 2844, which becomes effective July 1st, 2026. This bill's pretty straightforward. It'll strip all mobile food unit permitting from any county, city, or public health district, and gives it back to the state of Texas. So it'll be one permit issued through the state of Texas that is good in, for the entire state. We do have the ability to contract through inter-local agreement with the state to do their inspections for them, and they could reimburse us for those inspections, but that is yet to be determined. They don't have to write those rule sets until May of '26. So we're really kind of in limbo on this one, but we, we do have to implement those changes. And then while we're in it, we thought we just might as well clean up a few definitions and kind of realign with state law. So Section 1, we removed seven definitions. These are all well outlined in state law. We updated one definition to match current state law. Section 2, we updated our fee structure for our, for our food establishments to match Senate Bill 1008. Just essentially said, we'll follow state law as it's written. We did create a universal permit expiration date, so as a business, we could manage- We did create a universal permit expiration date, so as a business, we could manage doing gross sales. So, essentially, our permits will start on May first and expire on April thirtieth, and then your next year's bill will be based upon your previous year's gross sales. We added permit renewal language that was just lacking within the ordinance, and we added language for permit application proration and extended term, which basically means if you apply within the first six months of a period, we'll prorate it. If you apply within the second six months of a permit cycle, you'll pay a year plus the proration. We think that would be best practice and business-friendly approach. And then section three is just some general language cleanup, definition cleanup, just general stuff. And then section four, we moved all mobile food unit performance standards from chapter eight-five twenty-one to the zoning ordinance. This is one thing that twenty-eight forty-four allows you to do is still regulate time, manner, and place. We did that within eight-five. We're moving it to the appropriate location within the code now. There's no additions to it, I don't believe. It's just a straight cut and paste. Any questions?
Yeah, Anthony, on the with the updated fee schedule, if that was done, you know, based on what we did last year, are we going to see a net increase or a net decrease?
Definitely a net decrease. I would say just a rough estimate we put in budget this year, I think it'll be a two-hundred-thousand-dollar loss. This is kind of yet to be seen. You know, we take some best guess estimates here when we moved everyone over to the new fee schedule, but it is based upon gross sales. So, if somebody comes back and challenges it and says, hey, you guessed wrong, we could lose further amounts. Most everyone that I've talked to across the state is either one-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar loss.
So, and you made some great efforts to, I mean, we were moving towards cost recovery for your department, and that was that new fee schedule.
Correct.
Last year. Is there anything that we can do? I mean, I know our hands are a little bit tied with this, but is there anything we can do to cost recover? And I know that we talked about certainly the out-of-the-city, you know, inspections that you guys are having to do, not really being able to charge for them anymore. Is there any way that we can, is there anything we can do to make up that gap that we're now losing?
Yes, sir. I think a further conversation in the public health district and cost sharing for losses would be appropriate, and I think something that we would most likely talk about at a later point in time. I think that would be the best approach.
Okay. So, those are, I mean, those schedules, I mean, we, is that what we're doing? I mean, that's.
I believe we're going to have a conversation in a couple of months.
Yes, I had tasked Rich and Jason and Anthony to start working on that. They brought to me about through two, three weeks ago, and is when I became aware of that. So, I said to start exploring those options to working with the public health district and our county partners and locally to become, have a little more of a fair cost recovery.
Gotcha. Do we have the option? I'm not proposing this. Don't hear this. Do we even have the option not to inspect those? Maybe we do, but I mean, we would never, I don't think, want to do that, but we do need to cost recover.
Sure, we have plenty of choices if we'd like to do that. We're in a public health district that's been in place since, I believe, the early eighties. If we chose not to be the service provider in that public health district, we definitely could do that, but the alternative is just a bad choice.
Sure.
In my opinion. It would be the state of Texas that would have to come in and regulate everything that Amarillo didn't. They have three inspectors for twenty-six counties. You would probably see one inspection every two, maybe three to five years per facility.
Yeah, not good.
It's just a, it's a bad choice. I would not recommend that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman, you have anything?
Yes. Yes. So, just, so the state legislature came in and decided that they would determine our fees instead of we determining them?
That, that's correct, yes.
And so, that leaves us with a shortfall that now, and I guessing the state is not going to make that up, it's up for taxpayers locally to be able to come in and figure out a way either through your department or, I mean, historically, I mean, the, your department, wherever it falls short on cost recovery, is going to be subsidized by taxpayers, and we just added another hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to their bill, thanks to the Texas legislature making this decision.
I think those conversations were very clear at the legislative meetings that that was the intent, to move the operational cost to the tax dollar. I do also want to say, I forgot to mention this, this is a, Texas Restaurant Association's priority bill for this year was setting a standard across the state of Texas. So, this was their sponsored priority bill for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. On the TDLR or HHS, who handles this?
So, this would be the Texas Department of State Health Services, commonly referred to as Dishes.
Oh, okay.
It would be their standard that we, we are matching. I think that's what you're asking.
That, that is. And so, in that, if you're, are you still facilitating everything, or do our restauranteers need to know, like, you've got to file this with a different entity?
That's, that's a great question. For Senate Bill one thousand eight, we still manage everything. We're the service provider for the districts, everything in the eight jurisdiction area, that'll be us. For House Bill twenty-eight forty-four, the mobile food unit standard as of July first of twenty-six, they'll have to, our permits will be inactivated, and then we'll have to reapply through the Texas Department of State Health Services. It's honestly, it's a silly bill. We'll be regulating the restaurant, and then they'll have to deal with another entity for their food truck if they get that.
And is that something that you'll be able to send out notices for?
Absolutely. We'll definitely communicate that.
So, you'll communicate pretty well through that, and then, you know, as far as the pricing goes, is there any communication that needs to go on between us and our partners in the community and the restaurant business?
That's also a good question. We, one thing I failed to mention, we have, we knew this change was coming. We just had to catch up with the actual ordinance changes. So, we implemented a proration already in our department where all of our permits are prorated to expire on eight-thirty-one with the new fees coming on nine-one. So, we've already sent out, I think, two or three letters regarding the change, explaining the state law change, explaining the prations in your bills. Most everyone has already been made aware of two or three times.
Okay. Hey, thank you for the presentation, sir.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I don't think we have any further questions on item nine D. Any discussion on it, gentlemen?
No.
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance eighty-two oh seven as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second on item nine D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Kishuba, we see you in the back. If you'll come forward and talk to us about a aquatic study, please, item nine E.
Mayor Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item before you today is an aquatic market viability study, and really the purpose of the study is to evaluate kind of the current conditions of our aquatic facilities. So, when I say that, I'm talking about our four pools and our splash pads. We want to estimate kind of what those future expenditures are, and we also want to develop a strategic plan moving forward. A lot of these facilities that we have are at or nearing life expectancy. When I got here seven years ago, I was faced with the unfortunate challenge of having to close Thompson Pool within six months of being with the city. Obviously, that put council in a bad spot because it hadn't been communicated previously by staff as to the condition of that facility. What we really want to do is plan ahead, and so this is a strategic plan, trying to identify how we move forward with our pools and our splash pads. It looks at the condition of what we have. It looks at the market area. It looks at viability, and so it really just takes a holistic approach to our aquatic facilities on how we move them forward. So, that's what this study is. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Questions, gentlemen?
So, what are the current, at our, at our three, so we have three aquatic facilities now.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, outside of splash pads, but three where we maintain. What's the usage trend? What are we seeing as far as just usage of those facilities?
So, we're wrapping up the year. What we've seen is it's staying pretty true. Thompson makes up about sixty-five percent of the overall revenue for our aquatic side. Southeast Pool makes up about twenty percent, and Southwest makes up about fourteen percent. When we look at those facilities, just for reference, Southeast Pool was built in seventy-four, South, Southeast was seventy-four, Southwest was sixty-five. One of the challenges that we're faced is we've got some replastering that has to happen. Usually, that's done every ten to fifteen years, and we're currently at year nineteen. That's about four-hundred-thousand dollars per pool to replaster those. So, again, we want to make sure that it's money well-spent, that we're looking long-term while we also address those facility challenges that we have.
And so, what will this study be looking at? I mean, what is it going to be exploring? What do we, what, what will their, not what their, not what their findings will say, we don't know that, but what, what, what will their findings indicate to us?
Yeah, so obviously, the expected outcomes of this are we want to understand the facility condition and operations, just making sure that we're doing that well. We want to start looking at options for whether it's repair, replacement, or new constructions, or starting to identify what those facilities need moving forward, potentially looking at fee structures, making sure that obviously our fees line up with what market demands, and then looking at that long-term plan again to make sure that we provide those good facilities at a sustainable cost. Because right now, those specifically Southeast and Southwest are being subsidized pretty significantly based on attendance. So, our goal is really to look at surrounding the other providers in Amarillo, see what their markets are doing. Because obviously, when we built these pools back in the sixties and seventies, a lot of these other facilities weren't in place. Roder wasn't in place. The town clubs weren't in place. And so, the market has changed since a lot of our facilities were first built. So, again, we just want to take a step back, kind of look at the big picture, see where there are needs, maybe see where gaps have already been filled by other providers, and then look at options moving forward.
What's the trend in other cities, particularly peer cities, with what they do with these types of facilities or what they are doing these days?
A lot of aquatic facilities, you don't see as many. I think Lubbock, I think, finally closed their last pool, and they have one splash pad. We have, as a city, have three outdoor pools, one indoor pool, and fifteen splash pads. So, we've got a pretty intensive number of aquatic facilities when we compare to, say, Lubbock, for example.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions. What is the, the cost of a splash pad right now?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I would estimate you're probably looking anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand for a non-recirculating system. If you're doing a recirculating system, it's probably north of that.
And what is the annual maintenance on a splash pad?
I don't have that number. It would just be our staff time, and then obviously any kind of valves, fixtures, things like that that need to be replaced on an annual basis.
Is there any way, do we have anybody on staff that could do this as part of their, their duties to go in and do this evaluation as opposed to hiring Kim Lee Horn?
We have staff that could come back with recommendations. I think obviously, our recommendation is to do a third party. That way, it's not biased one way or the other by a staff perspective. So, we want to make sure it's a true third-party look at the whole market, not just staff deciding this is what we need to do moving forward. So, that's why we're recommending a third party to do this study.
And so, this aquatic market viability study is not looking at putting in an aquatic center in the city of Amarillo?
No, it would be looking at our current pools and splash pads and then trying to figure out what that looks like as we move forward. Do we keep them in the same location? Do we move them? Do we repair them? Do we replace them? Do we add new construction? What do we do?
So, we're not adding on to the house in times of
Correct.
roughness. We're trying to cut costs, right?
Correct.
And so, with this aquatic market viability study, we're looking to save money.
Correct.
And to continue to whittle down our deficit. Thank you. Yeah. Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to, Councilman Prescott, I asked the same question, and a little frustrated at the fact that we'd bring in a third party and pay eighty-five-thousand dollars, but we had a good discussion on top of what you just said, that you said they're experts at this as far as the splash, splash pads. They understand the market of all these things versus in-house where, like you said, it might be considered biased or whatever. And again, to reiterate, I think we're just trying to do a good job of saving money. Do you know how much, you said they were subsidized. Do you have a dollar value on that? Because we talked about the major repair, I think it's Southeast, that there's a void underneath the pool. We had a leak, and we had to fill it, and it's probably temporary-ish. It's working for now, but we're pouring a ton of money into these.
Yeah, so before the season opened, we actually had to go in and make some emergency repairs at Southeast because there was a void under the pool. We put flow fill in there, got it stabilized, but we know that that patch is probably fairly short-term. We also have the replastering that's kind of looming that needs to be addressed. So, that's, that's where we're trying to get ahead of this and look around corners. We estimate somewhere around a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar subsidy for both Southeast and Southwest. Thompson comes in pretty close to cost recovery if you exclude debt service. So, the numbers at Thompson continue to do really well. They're actually up over last year. We continue to see more and more people use that facility. We see more and more parties and rentals, and we were able to do that this year because we had enough lifeguards. In the previous years, we didn't have enough staffing to open for those extra hours, so this year we were able to do that. And again, I think Thompson has done very well. Those other two pools just have, have struggled on the attendance side and the cost recovery side.
Yeah. So, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar subsidy, that does not include any repairs if we, the replastering, if a pump goes out, any of that. So, it's one-fifty just to keep that thing open.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Reed, did you have anything additional?
One final question. What's, what's the, so you mentioned Thompson is up over last year. What are the historical trends for the other two? Is it, are they going down? Is it steady? Is it up? Are there trends that you've seen for the usage of Southeast and Southwest?
I'm looking at the numbers, and they look like they've stayed pretty consistent. June this year seemed to be up over previous Junes. Our July was down a little bit, so it was more in line and actually lower than some of the previous years. So, for some reason, July was a little bit down, June was up.
Anything further, Councilman? Councilman Prescott?
I would just ask the council to consider this as, send this back and see if we can do it internally.
I know I spent four years really pushing like consulting fees and just why are we paying for all of this? And so, I think I've just about gotten pulled all the way over to where, you know, like, the consulting fee does have some value. In, in an item where I know we could give an opinion in staff, what, what I think we're looking for, and I'll let you speak to this, Mr. Kishuba, I think we're looking for more of an overall study in, in like trends and what we're trying to do versus it being to, being something to where it looks like we're driving one neighborhood or the other, or one side of town versus the other. So, am I paying more for an independent opinion versus an internal opinion more so than expertise?
So, the, the goal of looking from outside is obviously they would do more of the market trends, to be able to see who's serving what area. A good example is the company that we were considering for this had recently done the one for the cap. So, they're looking at what those markets say and what the demand is being driven. We can guess, and we can look at what our trends are, but from an actual market standpoint, what would be served well, we just don't know. So, we can do our best to provide the trends, the information off of what we see, the operation side. The piece we can't see is the bigger market real estate side.
So, your request was to push it, and so I would ask you to maybe take it a step further. Let's either move it to internal and task them with that, or move it to, you know, the vote for this and go ahead and move forward with the study. Now, I guess to say it that way, do you have any timeframe issues?
No, I mean, our goal is just to try to get ahead of this as best we can. Obviously, we want council to be well-informed, have good information. Obviously, if we're having to make strategic decisions, again, a lot of our pools are aging, the splash pads are aging. We just want to make sure that we're making good strategic investments moving forward.
I think Councilman Prescott, if I was hearing staff tell me like, we can do it internally, you know, we'll go get that done for you, yes, sir, then I'd feel more comfortable pulling this off. But I almost feel like we need council to direct it based on the feedback that we're getting. Mr. Kishuba, you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
So, we know the state of the pools and the, the different aquatic facilities. We know the, what shape they're in. So, it's not a question really of maybe we really need to close one or two of them down and not put monies into them anymore. What we're concerned about is the effect on those neighborhoods, because some of those neighborhoods do rely on those particular facilities. Is that the main thing that we're putting out for a, a study?
That's correct. Trying to figure out where, where we fill in gaps, where gaps are already being covered, so that we, again, we want to be strategic. We want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and I think the study helps us determine where that's best spent.
But where, I would say, where's your comfort level? Because I had, I was exactly where David was in our meeting. Where's your comfort level? Because then, like Mayor just said, you spat off, well, we can do it.
Yeah.
But that's not, I don't think that that's what I got. I mean, it was like, we, we could, but we're just not maybe equipped in the same realm. Like, Tim's bringing up is what piece do they bring, and is it worth the eighty-five thousand, I guess, is what I would want to hear from you, representing your staff. Like, yes, we can do it. We, we know, just what you just said. We know the age. We know all that, but beyond that, do we have the expertise to make these calls and to be confident on them? If that's the case, let's save the eighty-five-thousand dollars. If you're like, no, they bring, they bring eighty-five-thousand dollars' worth or some value to it if we outsource it. it. I guess that's what I need to hear, to say, do we spend this money or do we not? And I trust you to lead your department.
For staff side, we can do the operations. We know the trends, we know what the general costs are. Obviously, having built Thompson that not that long ago, we know what the construction cost would be for replacement facilities. I think it becomes a question of if we do build or if we do repair, what does that look like? Where is that strategically located? Do we keep it in the same location? I'll give you the example, Southeast Pool is very confined. You've got some buildings around it on basically all the sides. So if we were to make repairs and renovations there, we really geographically don't have the space on that site. Southwest, you have a little bit more space where you could do some things on that location. But again, on that side of town, now you have two town clubs and a verdure that are in that same space and same market. So again, part of it is looking at what the market supports, and then looking at if the market's already covered, what do we do there? And if so, where do we put other facilities moving forward? So again, we can do the operation side all day long. Our staff is really good at that, we've got those numbers. It's the market viability trying to say, yeah, we could put a pool there, and it's going to hit cost recovery. That's something we could guess at, but that study would help us based off of real market data, seeing what other facilities are doing and how they're charging, and should we even enter that realm.
Are they doing a facility assessment as part of this?
Yeah, they would look at the existing part of it.
Why don't we pull that out? If you're saying, well, we can do that. In fact, we already have it. And I, that's, I'm asking for your opinion on that. If we can assess that and we know that, can we pull that from them and maybe get that bid lower and get their expertise of where they're really good? I trust you and your staff to say, well, we're really good at this. Either you are, you aren't at that. If you're not, let's use them. But if you're like, no, we got that, we know exactly where we are with the assessment of our current facilities, these guys, we need the market expertise, which, my guys, that's not really what they're hired to do.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. We could look at it, remove the pieces that are more of the operational and focus more on the market demand study.
And I would say, if you're confident, I mean, if you're confident in that, you know, if you're like, no, we got it, like, we can do that piece, but they, I would like them to do that. You know what I'm saying?
Counselor.
Does Kim Lee Horn, are they going to look at the safety and the integrity? When I hear the word void underneath a swimming pool, that raises great concern for me, just from safety of the users. Will Kim Lee Horn be looking at the safety and the engineering of these pools?
They'll look at the overall, but I think the challenge is for things like a pool, you don't know what's underneath unless you drill through the shell. And the reason we were able to determine there was a void on this one was because there were some leaks in the pool, and we went through a systematic process of patching those leaks. So we started at the top side, patched those leaks, there were still leaks. So we kind of continued and followed it down to where we got to the bottom drains. And when they were doing that, they found there was a void under the pool. So again, we were able to get in there, flow fill it, get it safe for the facility to be used.
And you said Lubbock had one pool and no splash pads?
I think they just closed their last pool, if I remember.
So they have no aquatics in the city?
Just a splash pad.
Just, how many splash pads do they have? Just one? Okay. And one, one final thing, when do the pools close? Here in a couple of weeks?
The Southeast and Southwest actually just closed this weekend. Thompson will be open on weekends through Labor Day.
And so we have basically nine months that these things are going to be shut down, and so it's not a quick turn at all, right? I mean, we have some runway.
We've got some time, yes, sir.
Okay.
But if we don't, if, I would say if we don't act, and then we look at, we're pressed against the season again, if there's repairs, major repairs that need to be made, plaster, that type of deal. And again, now we're in a crisis situation, and now we've got to shut the pool down and not open or make the repairs, which is a significant cost.
What is the annual cost of all the pools and splash pads?
I can get that for you.
Do we just ballpark? Is it a million dollars? Two million dollars?
It's just under a million.
And we have one unit that is cost recovery right now?
Yeah.
It's the new one, right, at Thompson?
Yeah, Thompson's doing extremely well. The other two have struggled. And again, Warford's a little-
Hard times, guys. Hard times are hard times.
Well, you have something else?
No, I was just going to say, Warford is kind of the exception to those four pools. Obviously, it's an indoor part of the year-round facility.
Why don't we-
The other three are seasonal.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we try to redirect? You could value engineer the study and reduce the scope of work of it. We can take no action on it today. Give you time to go ahead and go and do your eval internally. Bring that back to council with the evaluation from the internal side along with the cost with the revised scope, if that meets your timeframe. Council, is that what I'm hearing you guys lean towards?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Prescott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll take no action on item 9E and ask you to bring it back.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I'll tell you, we're pushing 5:00 here, and we still got a few more. I think most of these sit with Donnie Hooper, and we have a few with maybe one presentation. Let's take a really quick, we'll just do a 10-minute recess, we'll come back here and we'll wrap this up shortly. We are 9F, so Mr. Hooper, if you're ready, we're going to turn you loose.
I'm ready, and I think we can get through these pretty quick. What we're going to do is kind of combine 9F and 9G together in a conversation, if you will, and then we'll also do H and I in a conversation as well, because they all really tie together. All this in the name of transparency, when Mr. Path got here, we started changing a little bit of our policies and our practices, I should say, on how we would transfer something from one job that's existing to another when that job was completed. And we just want to make sure that it's full transparency, we're bringing that to council, these requests for these small amounts that we're wanting to take out of a job that we were working previously that has some funds remaining in it that we want to move to some other pressing jobs. So we have some pretty pressing projects that are critically important and we get completed. That's the ones that you'll see on this, rest of this agenda, and items G and I. What they are is, we had a project that was an assessment project for the Carson County Well Field. It also included a little bit of repairs and things that would take place out there on that line. We have finished with any part of that project that we are needing to complete on that, except for the possibility that there may be some line repairs that need to be. Floyd and I were having that discussion today. So we have a little bit of funding that's left there, but we certainly have the capacity to take care of the projects that we're wanting to transfer this to. So that, the first item, 9F, is actually for the request to make those transfers. One of those is for two-inch main replacement in North Heights for 46,620. And what happened on that is that bid came in slightly above for that water main replacement over there in North Heights than what the actual budget was for that when we set that project up originally. So we'd need the 46,620 to make that project whole, pretty simple. And then the other would be the water main replacement. It's called the Southeast 10th Street Project, but that's actually 4th Street. There's several projects that took place on 10th Street, 9th Street, Polk Street, all together in one project. And if we could go back and rename that from the beginning, it'd probably be a downtown improvement project title or something like that. But it was named 10th in the beginning. So to avoid confusion on that, this is for 4th Street. You've seen the area just outside of Amarillo National Bank there. In fact, we've taken some calls on that in the past couple of weeks. We had an elevation bust on that project in the design portion of that. We're having to go back and correct that. So this would be for extending that sewer main about three-quarters of a block further than it is now, so that we can have that tie-in point and the elevations work, and we can get that sewer to drain out of there. So we want to get that one cleaned up. Jerry Danforth came on board, and his position is new position, that's one of the projects we say we're going to tackle first, is figure out how to get 4th and get that cleaned up and get that project finished. So again, in the consideration, F would be for the approval of the transfer, then G is actually the work for the change order for the 4th Street project, and that's what that is. So those two items there, you could probably address first, Mayor, if you'd like to, and then we could go ahead and go to the next two items, and we could take over there whatever your direction may be on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think we'll take them out of order like that. So one, just would start off with, Mr. Path, we appreciate the due diligence of going- So, one, just would start off with, Mr. Path, we appreciate the due diligence of going, closing the project out, bringing the available monies back, so that we can see where it's going, versus just kinda handling stuff in-house, which may have been the practice before. So, council, we have any questions for Mr. Hooper on item nine F? We'll entertain a motion on item nine F just to approve, and then we'll get into the actual funding.
I move to approve item nine F as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And so, Mr. Hooper, you wanted to take item H with that, is that correct?
Well, I think you could go ahead now, and G is actually what that funding is going to be used for in the change order for the project on Polk Street, or, sorry, on Fourth Street. So now, now that that's been approved to transfer the funds there, then you would approve the item where that funding is going to.
So you don't even go out of order, you're good going to G?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So, council, do I have any discussion or questions for Mr. Hooper on item nine G?
So the change, the change order number three, that is again for something that we did not foresee, but has come up once we got into the project?
That's correct. We actually, once we, and Floyd was more involved in this than I was, so he can probably answer questions better than I can, but I've stood it up on it pretty well. We had, in the design piece of that, there was an elevation bust or a misalignment of where the elevation would take place to cause us to force that to drain, if you would, gravity flow. So, once the construction project was near completion, that's when that was realized. So, if the project would have been designed differently from the very beginning, we would have had to do this work anyway to get that to flow out of there. So if I'm missing anything, Floyd, feel free to jump in, but I think that, we're just cleaning that up so we can finish that project. We have to take about three-quarters of a block of extra sewer line to make those grades match.
And the question everybody wants to know, how long will it take before we're restoring the big hole on Fourth Street?
Yeah, well, I think that, once we start to see some movement out there, I think the calls will stop, but we're looking at probably a six-month project. Weather depending.
Any other questions, council?
Was that internal engineering that did this project?
Yes.
And so we, how did we miss the, how did we miss it?
Could turn your microphone on on the back for you. So, how that transpired was that through the survey, there's, we have a survey team that goes out and surveys for the engineering design, and the engineer verifies that survey depth. So what happened was, you have a gravity flow sewer that goes from point A to point B. They decided, they determined under the design that they could stop at this point based off that survey data. And that survey data wound up that that was higher than what was coming in. So, gravity flow sewer, you have to go on, so there's ability to adjust that at the next manhole. So it was an oversight from the combination between those surveyors and the engineer confirming that it would work.
And that was all our folks, all internal?
Yeah, that's, that team was internal.
Okay.
Okay.
And we've done a corrective action on that, I would assume, to keep that from occurring again, lessons learned?
That's always reviewed when you have this type of scenario with the design engineer.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Floyd or Mr. Hooper? Okay, before you, is item nine G.
I move to approve item nine G as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on nine G. Item nine H.
Okay, nine H combined with I, if you will, they're both the same item, it's the same process, but this is a little bit different. This is not taking something, this is actually asking for a transfer of reserves of seventy thousand dollars to add to the project that you see in the final item I, which is concerned of the lead and copper rule improvements. And what this is, this transfer request is for is, when they originally started this project, they were unsure of what the total cost was going to be and what they were going to contract out for two different districts on there. It would be the oldest portions, and I think I've seen this presentation before. We have a presentation prepared, but I think y'all have seen it before, Mayor, I'll just leave it up to you as to whether you would like to view that presentation again. But basically what it is, there's two districts that we're going to hire a consultant to come in and do all the testing to see what lines are galvanized, which ones are, have lead in them and things like that. It takes a little bit different expertise than what we have within our internal staff, which has, by the way, done a tremendous amount of work internally in the areas that they could to save us some money there. So this would be to move seventy thousand into the bid, which is in nine I, to add the full amount to that contract, so that we would have enough to pay them to do the full amount of work that we want them to do. That was a lot to say, and I probably didn't explain it very well.
I think you said it well. Let me ask you real quick, on this scope of work, a while back, we had legislation that would extend past the public into the private side of the yard. Does this reflect any of that, or are we still following the directives from the lead and copper rule that keep us all on our own pipe?
This is lead and copper rule that affect municipal government or governments, separate from what the private industry would face. And Floyd, again, is the expert on that as well.
Well, if I understand your question, Mayor, is, are we evaluating the customer side?
Correct. So on the customer side, are we, are we replacing the?
We're not, this doesn't replace, this is an evaluation, and yes, we are evaluating both sides of the meter.
Yes. This is just to determine.
This isn't replacement yet.
Well, you're correct, but I would assume if you put out the study, you do the evaluation, it leads to the scope of work that would, that would produce the improvement on the customer line as well, as a recommendation. So like, if we take that step here, and do we have the ability to pull that back, knowing that there's some conflicting law there?
This, this is the evaluation, and the EPA has not yet had a rule change that takes away the private side. That's, that could be in the works with the, with the administration in Washington, but that hasn't occurred yet. This is the evaluation component that tells you what the scope of that work will be. So this isn't committing you to replacement, this is saying, this is what it is based off that identification required by the EPA. Once you get that, then by twenty-six or seven?
Twenty-seven, I believe.
Yeah, by twenty-seven, then you have to have a plan of action in place to replace. So you have this time window for the administration to effect that change, if it's gonna occur. If they don't, then you will have a contract that reflects private side.
What would it do if you were not to spend the sewer and water monies? Because these are your, these are the city's monies. What if you, what if you didn't expend that on the customer side? What would that do to you in twenty-twenty-seven? So you revise the scope of work, I guess.
Okay, the second phase of identification is where we're in, and that's what this scope covers. So we had the first phase that was due by twenty-twenty-five, October of twenty-four, right? October of twenty-twenty-four, we had the first phase. Now we're in the second phase of identification to maintain compliance with the EPA lead and copper ruling as it is currently approved at the EPA level. Okay, if the administration facilitates that change, then that can be adjusted. But right now, if we don't do that by the deadline of phase two, then you'd be in violation, EPA violation of operation of your system.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, since we're budget season and all things budget, since this is gonna be a transfer of funding from the water and sewer reserve funds, are we shorting the reserve? We're gonna have to come back and replenish that at some point?
No, sir, yeah, this is, this was related to some other projects that I believe they had closed out, and so, no, we wouldn't be looking to have to replenish this.
Okay, so it's part of the projects, Grayson, that we closed out and had access, and so we've got that moved over to reserves, now we're pulling to finish the project, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that's kinda the idea of what we're doing with all this, is capitalizing, closing out the projects, and we have a little bit left in reserves that we can, instead of doing a transfer like we did on the previous item from a project, this is just transferring out of reserves.
Got you, thank you.
And just to make sure, going back to the higher level, so this lead and copper ruling that we see, I guess, was a EPA ruling. I don't know if it was, it was forced or courts or whatever, but it's basically they require all municipalities to look and see if they, if you still have water transmitted by lead pipes, copper pipes, and others, that the EPA is saying, you've got to replace those at some point, not only on our side, but on the other side of the meter.
Correct.
Okay. That's why I guess everybody, I don't know, maybe it was about a year ago, everybody got these letters that said, just out of the blue, they don't know what your pipe is made out of, or maybe they're having some other way, but this is something that's, this is not our choice of doing right now. The EPA is forcing everyone to prepare to spend considerable amount of money, I'm guessing, unless they're gonna pay for it.
Something I might add to that, too, it was an interesting number that I learned, is that, you know, in-house, we've already done, correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, I think it's around thirty-six thousand, forty-six thousand, that we've done internally with our staff, and I think out of that, there was around two-hundred and fifty that met that requirement. Is that right? Yep.
Two-hundred and fifty?
Two-fifty-two, to be exact.
Two-hundred and fifty-two units, that's all that met, met the requirement in terms of being compliant or out of compliance?
Out of compliance.
Okay.
So the majority of them, then, were not. Now, again, what this is going to do is, this is gonna be in the older, the oldest portion of our community where we're, we're working on these, what this contract here has in it. We expect to see that that percentage or that ratio will probably change a little bit.
And I understand the need to comply, but to put a finer point on it, it's doing exactly the opposite with public funds that we've been told to do. So, the public does not pay for private improvements, so I cannot direct public money to anyone's private property in violation of law. And yet, the EPA is coming in and directly compelling us to violate that law in order to improve private property on the private property owner's side of the meter. That is all correct?
I would say that it is.
Okay.
I've got another question. So, for the eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, how many units will they look at? So if we've done forty-six thousand internally, how many more are there to do, and how much, how many will this get done?
I'm gonna have Shannon speak to that, she has all these numbers memorized.
The consultant had commented that the estimate for a service line inventory conducted by them would be one hundred dollars per service line inventory. So that's eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine service lines that they will inspect.
And when does this have to be done? I know that it was October, September, October of twenty-twenty-four, when this rule went into effect. When does this phase two have to be done?
The final deadline for the, the final service line inventory is November first of twenty-twenty-seven. We are attempting to get it completed by the end of this calendar year in order to develop the next step, which is also called a service line replacement plan. Part of the November first twenty-twenty-seven deadline is that if you have one single galvanized requiring replacement or lead line in your service line inventory, you have to have a publicly published replacement plan for how to handle those service lines. So not only is the final inventory due on November first twenty-twenty-seven, that replacement plan is due on November first twenty-twenty-seven. So if we can complete the entire physical inventory by the end of this calendar year, that gives us one full CIP cycle to actually evaluate our ability to, to determine which service lines will be replaced.
Would it not be better if we only have eight thousand left to go ahead and finish that out internally?
So we don't have eight thousand left, we have thirty-three thousand left. We are doing thirty, we've done forty-six thousand right now, we have thirty-three thousand remaining. We have Water Utilities working on those service line inspections currently. The two districts we are recommending to have a consultant assist us with have the oldest infrastructure. They don't have a standard meter box for us to look into and do a two-minute inspection. They need dedicated staff and dedicated equipment to be able to do those service line inventories running in parallel with our staff, who are going to do the remaining of the thirty-three thousand, minus the eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine that the consultant would perform.
Would it be better to take three-hundred thousand of the eight-hundred-and-eighteen and staff up and finish this up internally and save five-hundred thousand? Have we thought about that?
One of the challenges that they have is they're, they're able to do this, and I believe it's about three months out of the year, in the times where we're not having all of our major water leaks or winter weather, different things like that. So there's a little portion that they're completing all this in, in about a three- or four-month period. To stay ahead of that schedule, we really need to get a consultant on board. And I think more than that, just as you mentioned, is the expertise and the equipment that they have, that we don't have to test the older lines.
So thirty-three thousand left?
Thirty-three thousand total.
And they're doing a hundred dollars a unit, right?
Yes.
That's, that's what it is, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, can I drill down in on that? What, what is the timeframe that's compelling us? So I understand we need to operate in good faith, take steps towards all this, but like, you're saying till twenty-twenty-six, we have to complete the remaining thirty-three thousand units?
Well, to expand on her point, what you need, what we need for this to work is the ability to bring you the defined project in next year's budget for the capital. In other words, if we can expedite this, and that goes part to why the consultant needs to do that part, because over the winter, it would cost more for us to do main breaks with a contractor than this work. So we can leave staff on main breaks and those types of functions that are essential to keep the system operating. And what Shannon explained earlier was, what we need is a project brought forward in next year's budget for whatever the EPA still has on the rule at the time for October, for, for the November twenty-twenty-seven timeframe. And that's why it's essential, because we also have to have time to award and construct that project. Does that help?
Yes, but then the respectful question of, what if we, what if, what if we're doing a study on the legalities of compelling us to break the law in putting public monies into private property?
There are still ongoing efforts by the public entities, not just City of Amarillo, but all public entities, to discern the legalities of the private property issue, and that's across the state and the nation. So that will be ongoing. What, what we're saying here is, this gets us to guarantee that we can meet the deadlines as they are. What we can't predict is if and when that change would occur, if that occurs. So we're staying on path to stay in compliance on this worst-case scenario, and it can always be pulled back, and that will be a budget discussion next year.
Councilman.
What is the probability that, that we're gonna get an extension to the EPA? I mean, we, we don't know that, but are we seeing any indications or any, any signs from Austin or DC that this is gonna extend past twenty-twenty-seven?
So, twenty-twenty-seven starts the, the phase by which you have to start the replacements. All lead service lines, all lead in your system that's not within a residence or within a commercial facility actually has to be replaced by twenty-thirty-seven.
Twenty-thirty-seven.
You have ten years to replace them, but the twenty-twenty-seven deadline is to have a service line, a complete service line inventory that is publicly published, and you notify the public of the composition of the service lines. And then, after that, by twenty-twenty-nine, you have to have implemented your service line replacement plan, and subsequently, you provide the first update to the EPA regarding how many service lines you've replaced. The, the difference between the lead and copper rule revision, which was in effect the last time I presented this in front of council, and the lead and copper rule improvements, was that there had to be a mandatory ten percent replacement per year over the course of that ten years. Any galvanized that's downstream of an unknown lead composition, so if you can't prove that a galvanized line was ever downstream or not downstream of a lead service line, it still is a replacement requirement. As stated before, of, of what we presented and reported to the TCEQ on October sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four, of the entire service lines we had reviewed at that point in time, which was only thirty-six thousand at that point in time, there were only two-hundred-and-fifty-two galvanized lines and zero lead lines at that point.
Okay. Councilmember, if I could add to answering your question, we haven't seen the previous administration or this administration facilitating any change in this approach to this schedule. So until we actually see that, we're headed, we're headed down a path that this is a firm schedule.
Okay. And so, just for clarification, because we're throwing a lot of numbers here, we have to have this done by twenty-twenty-seven, phase two, right?
You have to have.
The thirty-three thousand that are left, those have to be identified.
Yes.
And what was, in twenty-twenty-seven, when?
January, November first, twenty-twenty-seven.
So we have basically two years, two and a half years, and why is there a rush on the CIP? Explain that to me one more time, I'm trying to, and I'm not doubting, I'm just trying to get the, the timeline figured out.
Understand. So if we can have the service line inventory, the complete service line inventory So if we can have the service line inventory, the complete service line inventory in front of you before the next round of the CIP cycle, which would be in July of 2026, is that correct? In July of 2026, we wouldn't be able, we, the utilities who have been conducting the physical inventory, wouldn't be able to have that service line replacement done by July of 2026. And then you don't have a CIP cycle to, to actually start planning for that replacement plan, which is, again, a mandatory requirement of that November first, 2027 deadline.
And one, one last clarifying question, or another clarifying question, I'm not gonna say one last. So we're talking about the, the city-owned lead and galvanized lines not going into the, the private?
No, sir, we're talking about the private side, too.
Okay. And, and so then those would have to be, if we had to replace those, the city?
Yes.
It would have to be done by 2036?
Twenty thirty-seven.
Twenty thirty-seven. So we still, so why would we have a CIP issue by 2027 if it's not needed until 2036?
With the caveat that ten percent of those have to be replaced each year, so we have to start the program.
I thought they removed that ten percent metric in the revision.
They modified the ten percent metric. You have to give the EPA an annual report after 2029 stating what work you have conducted in that period of time, from 2029 to 2037.
So what I think I hear you saying, I mean, council would have the, I mean, we'd have the option. I guess they're just trying to be prepared to give us the information, and then we could, you know, if, if that's gone, then if, even if we get to that point.
And I'm not trying to be adversarial, I, I understand what you guys are saying, I'm just seeing if we have more runway to use these dollars in a, in a more pressing manner than they are, are today. I would, I would personally like to see if we could do it internally, get the equipment that was needed, and see a price comparison of that, because we might be able to use that in other projects. I would, I would like to see what that entails, if it became part of our arsenal of tools. And if it was a, a couple-year deal where we hired a couple, you know, we brought four or five FTEs on to get this done, if we had that runway, because I do believe, if it is gonna be illegal, they're gonna have to figure out some mechanism to identify how private and public monies are spent, you know, and I, I don't, that, that is my opinion, in my opinion only, not anyone else on this council, but I think there's a, there could be some cost savings here.
Yeah, and we would have to, of course, get more FTEs, which is part of the budget process as well. So, and, and I think it's important to note as well how long they've been working on this, doing, to get those complete, those completed that they've done so far, and I believe it's from early '24?
So, uh, we've been working through the summer months in 2024 and in 2025. In the summer months of 2024, over the course of two months, we conducted twenty thousand physical line inventories. And since May of this year, we've conducted another, uh, twenty-six thousand service line inventories. Twenty-six or twenty-three, I apologize. The, the process by which we go through this, we, we have all of water utilities engaged in this. We have operators performing these inspections, we have maintenance utility mechanics, we have electricians, custodians. The problem we're going to run into is, once you start getting into the winter months, that's when we have the ability to take down parts of the water treatment plant to do the critical maintenance pieces for those wastewater, or for the water treatment plant. Same with other parts, we will absolutely start seeing an uptick in things like our water main breaks, which becomes an immediate customer service need. So to provide that timeline, we don't have as much staffing availability to support these through the winter months, through, to support doing the customer service inventories through the winter months. So again, if we could have this process and push this whole process forward, having the consultant conduct eight thousand of those inspections, we believe that we can complete the remaining of the roughly twenty-three thousand inspections over the course of the next seven weeks, and have the whole thing completed, and have a full service line inventory to hand over on January first to start making decisions on what the next step would be.
And we appreciate that timeline, however, I think what Councilman Prescott's driving at is, January first is, you know, eight months ahead of schedule. So we do have the runway there of maybe salvaging the external monies, and I don't, I wouldn't tell you, I don't understand how much is going to what or what you're in housing or not, but if his numbers are valid, it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar credit to try to internalize all of it. What if you had a seventy-five percent study by next budget cycle, and we can identify, um, you know, existing reserves, or in this case, excess reserves? And then we just earmark those in order to go ahead and, and complete the internal, knowing that the EPA thing is, is, um, not fully legal in a lot of opinions in the implementation of it, right? But we are in good faith complying, so what are the consequences if, if we didn't have the full study completed? But we did go ahead and take action throughout your CIP budget in order to earmark it.
I, I think that my concern right now is just that, I, I like the fact that they're doing their diligence now to get this taken care of, because the last thing we want to do is come before council and say, hey, here's a bunch of fines we have, or here's some things that we didn't get completed, or here's some thing. We don't want to have that conversation with the public or with you, because I think it's gonna be a lot more expensive than this adventure we're taking now. Plus, if you take, and just thinking about this after you made those comments, Mr. Prescott, if, if you take the amount of staff time that we've spent, uh, the hours, the equipment, and all the things that we do, there's a cost associated with that, too. Uh, and it's taking away from our abilities to do our other jobs within that department, too. So, there's a give and take there as well. I, I recommend that we go with the approach that they, that they have recommended to keep us moving down the track for compliance with EPA.
Anything further, Councilman? Yes, sir.
So, from what we've learned so far, when we get to the implementation of replacing what we have to replace, and I know we still have to, but if the trends hold out as to what we found so far, are we talking about one million, closer to one million dollars in spending, or a hundred million dollars in spending to replace what we're gonna have to replace?
Don't think we'll know those numbers until we have this project completed.
But, but I get, well, I'm, and I'm not trying to pin you down, I'm just trying to think in the future, because, you know, what my concern is, and, and I don't know whether all these would have been things that we would have replaced otherwise in the next ten years. I mean, we, we wouldn't have replaced them on the private side, and, and that's gonna have to be paid for other taxpayers, I mean, if it does get to that, if it winds up being upheld. But I'm just trying to get an idea, because my, my thing is, just, just going back to, like, the Texas Legislature passes something that they force us to do, but then it has an impact on our funding. Here's the EPA, again, forcing us to do, the federal government, see, we're at the, we're at the bot, we're, we're at the very bottom of this. So everybody above us can do all these things, and they can tell us what to do, but then when it comes to paying for them, it's the taxpayers that have to pay for them. And I think that's what people miss out, all, we have no, I'm not gonna say low, we have very little local control on all these things that get forced on us, but the, the governments are not coming to our rescue. We've got, taxpayers have to figure this out, so I, I was just trying to get it, so, and I guess there's no money coming from the EPA to support this.
Right, and, and I will, I will tell you this, and I probably should have said this before I made that recommendation a moment ago, we agree with you guys one-hundred percent, we hope that there's something that changes between now and then. That would be my ultimate hope, that there's someone that sees that they're giving us unfunded mandates that we have to comply with, so that we will not have to do that on the private side. But still, uh, it is what it is, and we're just trying to take care of what's in front of us, go ahead Floyd.
So Councilmember, uh, what you're asking is for a staff member to project a, a, just estimate, wild, wild, wild guess, basically, of what the cost would be. I'll do that for you.
Well, I'm, I'm giving you two very extreme ranges, because I'm just trying to think, do we think this is gonna be, you know, okay, we're gonna have it, or is it, well, we get the CIP budget to do this?
But I can, I can do that for you, because you can point at me after I retire and say he was wrong.
Good, make all the promises you want, go ahead.
But, but at minimum, you're gonna see, at, based off the ratio and going into the older neighborhoods, that two-fifty-two ratio is gonna be much higher. And so you're gonna see a minimum of a million-dollar project, and you could see as high as ten million pretty easily. It's gonna be in that range from those parameters that you said. And, and with the private lines included, it could go to the twenty, thirty million based off of what's on the private side, because we have no idea what's over there, okay?
And then just what, so the private side, we would have never done that, had this, so that's not a, but, but on, on the public side, that, those are things that probably would have had to been replaced in this next time period? Or, or do we have things that are in worse shape than the lead and copper pipes that we would have replaced before then?
From my opinion on the lead and copper rule, from all the way back into the nineties, what's been omitted from the lead and copper rule is this inventory. We've never known for sure what the, what the scope and, and level of the problem has been challenged. The, the, the issue in Detroit, in, in Michigan, uh, Flint, Michigan brought this to light for all, uh, the, the nation, that we needed to know what this is. So I see, I see both administrations and any future administration needing to know what this inventory is. And then it goes back to how the politicians determine what that lead and copper rule result is at the end. I, I'm just gonna say, I think you're gonna see a project between a million dollars to ten million dollars, and, and it'll refine as we get this information.
Thank you. What, what penalties and fines has the EPA put out that if you don't hit their benchmarks exactly on the dates? I mean, because we're talking a twelve-year period. So, have they put out anything that says you're gonna be fined, penalized, if you don't hit our benchmarks?
The, the penalties have not been defined as of yet.
Okay.
Okay, is TCEQ administering these, or is it EPA?
Uh, the inventory is reported to the TCEQ, so we've already reported the inventory, the initial inventory to TCEQ. We have a certificate of delivery, and we're actually defined as compliant on the TCEQ's website right now.
And what group is handling, is this in Austin, or is this local?
Uh, that's Austin.
And what group?
Uh, I would have to get you that information, I don't know right off the top of my head.
Okay, and we're not, are we seeing any guidance at all on this, from them?
They sent us a flyer.
Some minimal.
Yeah.
So they're trying to get their hands around it, too?
Yes.
So they're not worried about Amarillo as much as they're gonna be worrying about Austin, Dallas, Houston, those bigger metroplexes? I think we have runway.
You have a direction you wanna lead the council, sir?
I wanna think about it a little longer, I'd put it on the back burner for sixty days and have some more conversation.
I like it, um, I don't think any of us are gonna define any better the term unfunded illegal mandate, or maybe just unfunded mandate, we don't know. But we're asked to spend eight-hundred thousand dollars today, so, um, Councilman Prescott is, uh, is leading towards taking no action on these two items. Do I have any other discussion?
Just a moment, I'd like to, just clarify, I'm not against people having safe drinking water and-
Agreed.
I, I, I think the whole council wants safety, I think we all want environmental compliance, but I think we just have a little bit of, we don't need to, I would like to exploit this a little more.
Yeah, and I think in the, in the due diligence of the water being as clean as possible and, and the existing lines remaining in the structure of the home, and where that leaves, or the residence, or, I mean, I'm sorry, the commercial building, where that leaves people, that now we have, um, replaced their, their service line and, um, you know, I guess we stop at the edge of the building. But there's no law that says that's where we should stop, because the law says we should stop on our side of the line, so.
Can we ask for some, some clarity on direction, on what you would like to see? What other information you would like us to explore in that sixty-day time period, or whatever that time period is?
I think that's a great question.
I think it'd be my recommendation to, to further look and see what we would need in terms of FTE. How many staff members? I understand that you, you said that, uh, we had staff that worked on this. Uh, was it an overtime issue? That'd be one thing I'd wanna look at. Did we burn eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars in overtime from mission drift? Or were these individuals able to work on it and still meet their, their requirements? I would wanna know what additional equipment is needed to perform this task in-house. I would wanna know how many FTEs it would take to complete this task. I would like some kind of an idea on CIP, between a million and, and ten million, what that looks like. And then finally, I would like to have some further, uh, idea from TCEQ as this thing fleshes itself out. Those would be my requests, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would, the only thing I would add to this, and I would go back to your direction, but remember, if we're outsourcing this, this is only a temporary expense. I mean, unless we're planning on taking on FTEs, they do the work and then letting them go, then we've got some type of permanent expense associated with this.
Absolutely not, it should be a contract position, if we can do that, where they know when this task is done, and let, and you might find some incredible individuals that replace others that are low-performing, but we wouldn't have any expectation that they're gonna retire doing this job. Once the, the task is done, we'd be done.
Now, I, I would offer one other option there, I do know that we have contracts for main break replacements and different things, because we utilize plumbing contractors, because we are chronically kinda understaffed for the amount of main breaks that we see, plus we have them at different times, where if you had multiple or you have a real cold freeze, so not saying we wanna get away from subcontractors, but I would hope that if this task was completed, then we would have additional staff to get to the main breaks, which I think we're gonna see, you know, continual, uh, issues there as we continue to age.
Okay, tracking, got it.
I know it's a lot, but, uh, Mr. Path, do you have anything you wanna redirect on that? Anybody else have anything they'd like to offer? So at this time, we've given some good direction, Mr. Prescott or Councilman Prescott, I appreciate all of the insight, expertise.
Just before we close the door on it all, as, as Councilman Prescott says, one final question. A, any, any overwhelming negative of a sixty-day wait period? Anything that's detrimental, or, or anything that would say, boy, that's, that's, this is not a good idea, because this is really gonna do this, that, or are we okay with looking at it a little bit longer?
I don't, I don't think that I have concerns, I don't think Floyd, you, I, I don't think I have any concerns with that. Gives us a chance to do a little bit more evaluation and bring you back some more information, so I think that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take no action on nine H and nine I. Would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, you're adjourned, thank you, guys.